...in the local economy. So it's really a broadening of the types of work and the types of programs that can be implemented. The guidelines established three different tiers of priorities. For example, in the tier one, a project's income limits were priority, kind of like the board's guidance with the resolution. Projects that have 40% of their units set aside for an income level at 60% AMI would be prioritized. Similarly, a project that's targeting an 80% area median income level would be prioritized. The committee also felt like rental housing was a big need as well as mixed use and mixed income housing. Other priorities, a little bit lower level, would be the tier two priorities in terms of preserving existing affordable housing, location. And I think location is important. What we're talking about there, you know, it's certainly a county-wide program. We're looking to, you know, assist projects throughout Pinellas County. But the location criteria are based on one, local government support. Projects that the local government has prioritized and also location criteria such as transportation corridors, proximity to jobs, proximity to educational opportunities, community redevelopment areas, projects located in CRAs are prioritized. And also project readiness. That's a really big criteria. If a project's got most of its funding in place, entitlements, it's ready to go, then those projects would be prioritized. And the third tier talks about the overall area income of that general location, what the affordable housing needs are in the vicinity of that project, and leverage. If these public dollars are going into a project, are they leveraging a high ratio of private investment or other funding sources? So once the guidelines were approved and the priorities outlined, staff developed a process for basically a competitive application process. And we also looked at a scoring system so that we could evaluate the applications when they came in based on those priorities. And so this is just kind of an overview of the five broad categories that we'll be utilizing to evaluate project applications. So with that, we kicked off the first application cycle back in July. Had a two-month timeframe for applications to come in up until August 31st. During that timeframe, we received 18 applications requesting over $48 million. So we will not be able to fund all 18 applications at that amount this year. We're kind of wrapping up our evaluation process. We're doing our scoring. We've got department representation, multiple department staff looking at the projects to form our recommendations that will be taken to the Board of County Commissioners next month. One thing I'd like to, you know, say about that is, you know, we're prioritizing the projects based on the scoring and the criteria that we outlined. But other projects that might not meet that point right now, we're going to continue to work with those applicants. We're going to have multiple application cycles so the projects that might not be ready to move forward at this point can reapply, can come back and hopefully get to that finish line as we move forward. So we're currently accepting applications in our second round, and then we would anticipate a third round early 2021 for additional applications. a third round early 2021 for additional applications. So with that, I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about a housing compact that we're working on. Late last year, we initiated an effort to sort of bring together the larger jurisdictions and other community partners to work on kind of an overall housing plan. And a part of that effort, we found the idea of a housing compact, which I'd sort of compare to a combined proclamation, but working together as a community to lay out certain criteria, certain things that we all agree on, and come up with ways that we can address the affordable housing issue together, ways that we would, you know, maybe have similar programs, similar policies, things that would make it easier for the development community to produce affordable housing in Pinellas County, and a little less complicated based on jurisdictional boundaries. So we kicked that effort off back in December, when the world was a much different place, and we were anticipating a housing summit where we're going to bring everybody together, and developers, and the lending community, representatives from all the municipalities and governments, and really work through a series of these sessions. So, and then March occurred, and we've kind of gone back to the drawing board. But we're still working on that compact, and we've gone to a virtual series of summits with a compact. We've got representation from you all. Some of your staff members have been helping. We formed what we're calling a tactical team to kind of look at the things that would go into the compact. As I mentioned, sort of a statement of values, statement of need, kind of outlining the importance of housing to our community for the workforce, for the elderly, and how important it is for the health of the community to have quality housing. So the compact, that tactical team's going to be drafting that, and then we would anticipate them coming back here to present that to you and get your input as we move that effort forward. Some of the things that that team wants to work on, then sort of following that compact, if we can reach kind of some agreement of the things that we need to do as a county to improve our affordable housing, would be, you know, kind of craft that overall housing plan, establish some measures, some targets, how much housing are reducing, how are we preserving the affordable housing that's in place. And look at our regulatory toolkit. By that, a lot of our jurisdictions have incentives for developers to build affordable housing, but I'm not sure any two of those are quite alike. So it may be worth looking at some consistency there so that we can kind of take the best approaches, make that sort of the model for maybe a county-wide implementation. I should have mentioned, I think it was in the slide, one of our key partners on this effort is Forward Pinellas. You know, they're looking at this housing issue as an important aspect of their transportation decisions and the work that they're doing. So they're a close partner, helping us with this effort as well. And as I mentioned, Tom, who we'll be looking to work with as we move this effort forward, our local governments. We've started with the larger entitled communities, Largo, and St. Petersburg, Clearwater, Pinellas Park, to kind of get their input, build this concept. And then we want to reach out to all the cities within the county, as well as others, housing advocates, housing builders, you know, anybody involved, and really spread the message. So along those lines, the housing summit that I mentioned earlier, once we realized we weren't going to have the big event that we'd hoped for in 2020, we decided to do a series of webinars. So we actually just had our third one last Friday. We kicked it off a few weeks ago, which I really thought was kind of an inspirational one with the importance of housing. We had a nationally recognized speaker, Dr. T, join us, and she really had a lot of good points about housing and the importance of getting ahead of that issue now before it gets even more challenging. And we've got our fourth one coming up November 20th. So I've included the website here. If you haven't had a chance to tune in, each one is saved and available online. We'd love to have you follow that, participate. And if you could, especially the fifth and final one, we're really going to kind of be reaching out to elected officials. I mean, you should be receiving invitations for that event. Really encourage you to participate with that, to kind of learn more about the efforts that collectively we're doing at the county to have a much bigger impact on housing in Pinellas. So with that, I'll wrap up and happy to answer any questions.
Couple of points that I'd like to make as well. We do have an affordable project that has applied for penny four funds under the process that Bruce outlined. That's the Avalon on Seminole Boulevard. That was in front of City Commission on October the 6th, where Commission agreed to set aside $75,000 of commitment of housing funds if it wins the lottery. The developers of that project have applied for penny four money as well. Our planning manager, Rick Perez, has been on the panel of one of the sessions for the housing summit. So we are participating in these things. Also, as I said, we hope to come back to you in about two months with some ideas we wish to share. There is a staff working group that's not only participating, but is looking at ways that we can make our processes better, change our codes, including something that's kind of new for us, and that's looking at pre-selecting sites and marketing them for affordable housing people. In the past, we've basically played a very passive role. People have come to us and they said, "We've got a site. We want to build affordable housing on it. You know, can you go to the City Commission and see if we can make it work?" So we hope to be a little more proactive, and we'll share those ideas with you soon. Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Any questions? I had a question about, you talked in a couple spots about preserving the affordable housing that we have. So I guess my question is, and I ask this question a lot when we're talking about affordable housing, are we talking just about housing that has been, that's in a program that's subsidized or whatever? Are we just talking, are we including homes that happen to be affordable? Like, you know, in Largo, we have two or three of the largest senior mobile home parks, really nice little communities, and they're affordable senior housing in our city. And I think it's an important thing to consider, and an important thing that a lot of the conversation usually doesn't talk about. So my concern is preserving those long-term. And now, a lot of them are different situations. Some of them are owned by one entity that doesn't happen to live there, and others are owned by all the people that live there. So I think each of those are probably have a different future. But I think the ones that are resident-owned are probably going to stay resident-owned as long as I'm here. And so my question is, how do we preserve those communities? And I think I have a particular interest in making them more sustainable in storms and that type of thing as well.
Go.
Great question. In terms of preserving affordable housing, one of the traditional methods would be, as you alluded to earlier, an affordable apartment complex, for example, that had a 30-year restriction, and that restriction's getting ready to expire. Penny funds could be used to significantly renovate that and extend the affordability period. With a mobile home park, you know, we're grappling with some of those same challenges. We've looked at the penny funds, and we do think that those dollars could be potentially utilized. They can be used for capital improvements. So there could be a scenario where a park may be resident-owned, needs infrastructure improvements, stormwater, drainage, those kind of things, that these dollars could be utilized to assist and preserve that park and make those improvements. So it, you know, has to be tied to those capital improvements or land acquisitions. So there could be a venue there where, you know, maybe it's a scenario where a single owner wants to sell the park. Residents could perhaps form a co-op to purchase the park, but not have the resources to do so. So this could be a potential funding source to help assist with part of that land acquisition. We haven't seen an application like that or specifically designed a program, but conceptually, those are some of the concepts we have discussed, that it could have potential to help out in that arena.
So, and you mentioned that the expected revenue is about $160 million, and I assume that's for the 10 years of the penny. And that's for the entire economic development as well as housing. Is that correct?
Correct. That was the projection. I don't have an updated number based on the surprises of 2020, but yeah, the 160 was the projected over the 10-year, of which a minimum of 50 percent would be for housing. And on the economic development side, those dollars, you know, could also be used for, in concept, a mixed-use project that, you know, could be bringing jobs as well as housing. So there could be a little bit of overlap with those dollars, but a minimum of 50 percent of those funds are targeted for housing.
My last question, at least for now, is when a project, and there may not be a hard fast line, but when a project is applying for penny four funds that has an affordable component, is there a minimum on the affordable component? So if somebody wants to build a 30 percent affordable project, would that be allowed, would they be allowed to apply?
Yeah, there are a number of minimums. So in terms of even the unit size, we'd have to be eligible, there have to be at least 10 affordable units. And then as a percentage, at least 30 percent of the units have to be affordable. And in terms of timeframe, if the funds were used for construction, there would be a 30-year affordability period. If the funds are used to buy the land, then essentially you're putting that land into a land trust and preserving it in perpetuity for affordability. So there's a few minimum requirements, as well as different ways that eligibility would be ensured.
Good. Thank you.
Bob, I'm very happy to hear about the being proactive part, and I look forward to hearing more about that. And I'm very happy to hear, working with Forward Pinellas, I think that is important in the area because with transportation and everything that's kind of going on, that's something we have to tie in with affordable housing and jobs and transportation to get there, a network. How do you prevent, I shouldn't say, I don't want to use prevent. You said that most, like, have to have the funds upfront or something dedicated to it. How do you keep track of, like, it's not going to one city entity? St. Pete's a big city here. And how do you, all that, let's say, they have the resources, and they got the people behind it, and they already kind of dedicate. How do you justify it outside, around the county, in other areas? If some, like, Tarpon Springs can't come up with something like that, how are you all looking at that?
Right. I think we tried to take that into consideration with the scoring, and so it wasn't necessarily a large amount of funding from a city would get more points. Points are awarded for local government support in two ways. If there is a funding commitment, for example, the $75,000 to Avalon, you know, there's no set amount, but that's saying to us that the city supports this project. There's also other incentives. So for example, if a city would give a density bonus for affordable housing, then that would score points. So a city can show that local government support in ways other than financial. And when we talk about funding for the project ready to go, usually it's, you know, we're talking a $15 million project. So the city's really not the primary funder. With the Avalon project, for example, if they're awarded the 9 percent tax credits, that's where the primary funding should be. So when we're looking at applications right now, an application that's received an award of funds from, say, the state's apartment incentive loan program or HFA bond issuance, you know, that project's much closer to being financed. And we're really trying to reach out to traditionally market rate developers. I think that's one thing about this program, that, you know, for years, we've had affordable housing programs, and we typically work with affordable housing developers that apply for and receive tax credits and build affordable housing. What we'd really like to do here is sort of expand that and attract the market rate developer that's going to build 100 apartment units. It sees this as an opportunity that if they can utilize some penny funds and therefore provide for the community 80 percent AMI units, maybe that's 30 percent of their units. You know, that way we'd be capturing a lot more productivity, a lot greater number of affordable housing units than just working with the typical affordable housing developers. So we want to continue to support them, but expand the range of who we're assisting and really try to attract market rate developers to include workforce housing and affordable housing in their developments.
Okay. I'll think my other question.
Bruce, I'm glad to hear you say that because sometimes we get caught up in the terminology, and we have to try to communicate and explain to our residents that we're talking about workforce housing, or, you know, we have to overcome sometimes the people's negative assumptions about when you use the term affordable housing, what it's going to do to the adjacent property values and things like that. So I'm glad to hear you say what you just said about market rate developers having a portion of that set aside. I think that's great. Just, this is really not a question. It's just more food for thought because here in Largo, you know, we're central Pinellas County. We have about 85,000 residents, but we have a patchwork of unincorporated county inside of our service area. So we're pretty sensitive to trying to wipe out these little enclaves wherever we can. And some of these affordable housing locations are sometimes, you know, kind of right on the edge of the city and the county together. So annexation opportunities are important to us when we can, I can think of several areas of the city that we would like to have jurisdiction over that we don't have control over right now to develop better housing in the areas, areas to the north, our northern border between us and Clearwater, perhaps down in the Ridgecrest area or out in High Point. And sometimes the only way we can help to improve the standards there is to have jurisdiction so we can, you know, we can build. And new construction and development orders and all the other things give us all kinds of tools to do that. So I know that staff, you guys all have these conversations, and I just wanted to say that to you. So when you're considering opportunities in Largo, if you see something that's on the border and you can shove the county, get an annex in the city, I'd really like to see that happen. But I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to be clear, you didn't mean wipe out the enclaves. You meant bring them into the city.
I was just playing off when you said we were spaced out in here earlier, you know.
Thank you very much for your presentation and the information, and hopefully we get some projects in and around Largo that qualify for some of this penny four funding.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll be talking about the state legislative action agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and Commission. Nice to see you all this evening. So we have for you this evening, you may have just received it, so for that I do apologize. You do have a draft copy of the 2021 state legislative agenda proposed for your consideration this evening. You will find that there are several topics that were included in last year and also potentially previously to that as well. If you would like to take a look at, potentially starting on page five, you will see one of the first new additions to this year's proposed agenda. And that is a big focus here on sustainability and resilience. This information has been provided to us by our sustainability administrator, Laura Thomas, and it seems particularly appropriate this year. You may remember back in September, there was an editorial in the Tampa Bay Times that was written by our incoming speaker-designate, Chris Sprouse, and also the designated Senate President, Senator Wilton Simpson, in which he challenged the state of Florida that it was time for us to begin talking about sea level rise. We do believe that maybe not this particular legislative session, but possibly the next one, we may start to see some competitive funding opportunities related to sea level rise, addressed in coastal flooding, and some of those kinds of issues. So we think it's appropriate at this point to begin adding this as a robust item to the proposed legislative If you take a look at the following page, on page six, those items were included in last year, so you don't have any new things to consider there necessarily. If you move to page seven, and the remainder of the document does include new sections that have been added. At the top of page seven, you'll see sovereign immunity as a topic. This is something that did come up probably about the middle of last session, and it was something that, as you may recall, we had some conversations with Senator Brandis on. you may recall, we had some conversations with Senator Brandis on. And he did indicate to us that at some point, don't know exactly which legislative session it might come up, but he did feel like cities needed to be prepared for, for some legislation that might be coming our way as it relates to sovereign immunity. So I thought this might be, again, a good time for us to go on the record in terms of what we would be looking for in terms of any changes in legislation related to sovereign immunity. We've added a section here on local meetings for your consideration. There have been several organizations, including the Florida League of Cities, and also the metropolitan planning organizations, and some other groups that are beginning to look at, given the experiences we've had during the COVID-19 pandemic, are there ways that we could streamline public meetings if we get into situations like this, whether it be from a natural disaster or a health crisis like the one that we're, we're currently in? So I wanted to bring that to your, for your consideration. And then the third item on that page is a topic that we worked closely with, with Mayor Brown during last legislative session when it came up. There is a legislator that's looking to make some changes to the yellow flashing lights on crosswalks. So we wanted, again, to be prepared from the beginning of session to go on the record in terms of indicating that we feel that those are important traffic safety features that we would like to have an opportunity to continue to have in our communities because we do think they, they do make a difference. Moving to page eight, you'll see local self-government is, is a topic that has been in every legislative action agenda that has been brought forward to the commission for consideration. The new item on page eight is the USF consolidation. I'm proposing that for two reasons. We have seen quite a bit of interest on the part of Speaker Designate Chris Sprouls and also Senator Jeff Brandis and Representative Ben Diamond as well, having some concerns about what is happening with the consolidation and making sure that the, what used to be called, I refer to it as the Bay Borough campus of USF, I don't think, I think it's properly called St. Pete now, but that that campus be a true university setting and be able to control their budget and those kinds of things. And I think in keeping with some of the strategies in the city's strategic plan, in terms of helping our residents be all that they can be, that educational institution is certainly one that is in close proximity to the city and a very affordable option for our residents. So I wanted to bring that to you for your potential consideration. On page nine, you'll see that we have started to outline the concept potentially of some regionally based COVID-19 recovery, including some items, for instance, like equity inclusion, specifically the digital divide. This is a, a topic that the Florida League of Cities is undertaking. And also community infrastructure, the item below that, really beginning to, to realize that while there have, you know, there's been a lot of economic impact from the COVID-19 pandemic, our, our social institutions and nonprofit organizations are feeling the same kinds of financial stress as a result of the pandemic as well. So beginning to address the fact that we may need to do some reinvestment and some rebuilding in that social infrastructure as well, so that those organizations can continue to serve our residents. And then last but not least, you'll find on page 10, we've added a section that might be a little bit unusual related to the Florida Public Service Commission. Mayor Brown has worked with myself and with Laura Thomas this past year, probably about the last year and a half. We have had several instances where it was in the city's best interest to begin engaging the Florida Public Service Commission. And since the Florida Public Service Commission is controlled by the state legislature, and the state legislature makes appointments to their board, it seemed like it might be appropriate within our legislative agenda to identify some of the types of policy issues and what the city's position would be on those items as kind of a, an adjunct, so to speak, to our legislative action agenda. This wouldn't necessarily be something that we would potentially engage legislators on necessarily, but it, again, it would, by including it here, it would help provide staff with guidance on which items have been blessed by the commission to move forward and engage with the Public Service Commission on. So I think I'll conclude my remarks there in regards to this particular document and entertain any questions, concerns that you may have. I do have just two other minor issues to discuss related to legislative matters, but if there's any questions or comments in regards to the document itself, be happy to entertain them at this time.
So, if I may, Mayor? So, are, so, so I understand this entire document is going to be our legislative action agenda. There's a lot of items on here.
Yes, there are.
So, so how do we prioritize what's in this agenda?
Well, I think in the past, what we've, we've tried to, in the document, we've tried to list some items in a priority order. So the items in the first part of the document outlined here are the priorities that the commission had adopted in prior years.
Okay.
But certainly wanted to, again, bring the, the prioritization to you for consideration this evening.
Okay. Because I, I think, and this is just my opinion, I mean, if we're going to look at prioritizing some of these issues, I think some of these issues that are new and some, you know, maybe towards the back of this, obviously COVID-19 recovery is going to be a huge, you know, I believe should be a huge priority for this commission as well as the entire world. But, um, you know, it's something that we're going to have to absolutely, it's probably going to be the most important thing going on in the legislature this year, I would imagine. I mean, I think that's going to take priority over everything in, in, in the legislature, from, from what I can tell. I think this, this last item, the, with the Public Service Commission is going to be very important. I think if we are to reach any of our goals that we've set for the city of Largo, this is going to have to, the, the way the Public Service Commission works currently is going to have to absolutely change in order, you know, to allow us to meet the goals that we have set for, for us. So, I mean, and then, you know, if we look in, if we're looking at like short-term rentals, it's not really a huge issue for the city of Largo in particular. I know that it has continually been a, a priority for the Florida League of Cities. I wouldn't care if I ever heard short-term rentals again, but I, I don't believe for the city of Largo, it necessarily needs to be a priority. So, you know, I'm, sustainability, resilience, obviously, in my opinion, is a priority for, over everything. So, yeah, I, I would like to absolutely look at, as, you know, kind of prioritize in these and, and have, have that list in, in, you know, available for us when we're, when we're beginning to have our conversations with the legislators. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Look, I, I was just, I guess the question I have, Cheryl, I think what you've done here, or we've done in the past, is pick out some lingering and some emerging issues that the legislature is going to face. So, I mean, there's one school of thought that says if you have a lot of priorities, you don't have any priorities. But on the other hand, this is really a, the identified areas that you, that you expect or anticipate will come up for consideration or debate. And this is just like a cheat sheet on where the city of Largo stands. Not only for the legislators, but for community groups or whoever, whatever the audience may be.
And for us, too.
And for us. So it incorporates issues that are important to the Suncoast League of Cities and probably the Florida League. And, and like Commissioner Robinson said, you know, this short-term rental thing, although with the Super Bowl coming, it might be an issue, you know.
Not for me.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm in favor of having this so that when these issues come up with our legislative delegation or whatever, they know, they know where we stand, and we know where we stand collectively. So there's no, no question in there, really. It's more, more of a, more about the intended audience and the anticipated issues is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. And I, I would agree. I, I think that this package is fantastic. And I think, you know, obviously the research that went into it and everything is, is great. I think all of these in some way will affect the city of Largo. And, and I think, you know, the last thing you said in your, in your, in your comments there was, it kind of also gives the staff an idea of what we, as the commission, want them to be working on. So I think in that, in, using this for that is, is fantastic. My, like I said, my only concern is, and I think, you know, to John's point, is that if we have a, you know, 20 different things, what, you know, we're, we're just kind of all over the place. So I think having two or three specific things maybe out of this that we can definitely prioritize, but then, you know, have this as backup for any of the other issues that might arise, as well as the things that we haven't thought of yet that will definitely come up. So.
Well, ironically, very similar conversation happened today at Forward Pinellas Legislative Committee meeting as well. So one of the things that they're looking at is sort of an infographic, similar to what we saw the Suncoast League do last year. So if, if you concur, we could certainly pull out the top priority items from this document and design sort of a one-pager, you know, something that we could take with us when we're, when we're in, and have with us when we're in Tallahassee or when we're meeting one-on-one with legislators. And that might give us the best of both worlds.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
I think that had worked pretty effectively last year with the Suncoast League of Cities. And I would like to see that as.
But you are, you are expanding that concept to let Senator Brandis and Speaker Sprouls know that where you stand on that issue, that is not at, rated our doorstep, although it affects our greater community, but they'll, they'll know, you know.
Well, they know we care about short-term rentals. They've heard it before.
No, no, I'm talking about the USF issue. Yeah, the short-term rental thing is, is something else. But it is important to some of our neighboring communities. So, you know, at least they know where we stand on the issue.
Sure.
But I do agree that, you know, it'd be nice to decide what our top two or three priorities are. What do you think?
Yeah, I agree. I, I mean, distill out one page of, these are really what, what we would like to see happen or not happen in Tallahassee this year. And by the way, if you're, if you're concerned about it, this is how we feel about this stuff. So I think this, this document, you know, is very valuable for if something comes up where we get an email that says, hey, it looks like they're going to be taking action on sanitary sewer laterals, right? So we can take a look and, and pull out some bullet points and send emails to the folks that we know up there and, and use some of the information that's in this. And, and even reference it, you know, according to our city commission passed state legislative action agenda, this is how we feel about this. But when we're up there talking to people, if we put this on a desk, they're probably not going to read it.
Even though it's laid out very well, and it's not like three hours of reading, it's pretty, I mean, it's, it's awesome packet. I mean, they did a great job here.
Thank you.
But it, but it communicates the fact that we have anticipated these issues that are, they're going to arise, and we want to make a statement about how we feel about it. It's not just, you know, what have you done for me lately? We want money for this project or that project. It's, this is more comprehensive.
I kind of get a feel, like, this would be like, maybe I'm getting mixed up a little bit, pull out a few things for the rep themselves, but this is kind of more for their staff that they know what Largo is kind of pushing, you know. I, I do agree, maybe move some of it around a little bit that are important to us here. But this would be good for their staff to know that, hey, if this kind of came up, Largo's already, it's there for them and they can get. But I would agree, if we had something for the rep that I can hand in, it says these are the main things that are Largo, and how is it going to affect Largo and your district, it may resonate with them a little bit more. On the flashing beacon one.
Yes.
On that one, I think if we talked about that in cost a little bit, if they knew how much that item alone would impact Largo by doing something like that, I don't know what the cost of one of those things are on top of my head, but if we sat there and said that's going to cost a million dollars to Largo alone, you know, it's an unfunded mandate to a point. Maybe they can get that idea in their head that, you know, why we're against it.
That's a lot more to build bridges.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. And I think legislation last year called for them to put full signaled lights in place. If we, if, if we were going to have anything at all, I guess the option, maybe I'm incorrect, but I believe the legislation called for, we could either delete them or it would have to be a full signaled light, which.
Didn't go very far.
No. And I mean, it was a tragic situation that arose that, that, you know, but.
But I'm just thinking, if we put something on there to flash on there, right, that we know, you know, what impact it would have on the residents of Largo.
I'll be happy to add that. I think we have that information already. So.
I read, I read the, this a little while ago, so I'm not sure if it talks about it directly, but I, my, our main priority is increasing pedestrian safety, and this is just one of the tools. So, so we look for any legislative support, for ideas, for funding, for, for ways to make it safer to walk around Pinellas County. I think that's a problem. I know that's a problem that every city is, is trying to struggle with, or struggling with. My two suggestions would be, one, to, to kind of distill out a couple, like the top three, top two or three, on a one-sheet type thing. And then, and then also to add, like, kind of an intro to this. So if this does get in the hands of, of the staff person, it talks a little bit about our, you know, our strategy on, it kind of talks about how we put this list together and, and what, what this represents from us. These are some things that we think are important to our state as well as our city. And, and we are pretty united on, on our, these opinions on these things. And, and if, you know, if you need support on moving forward with any of these, we're here for you, something like that. Kind of an intro rather than just affordable housing because it has an A in the front.
Also, reading through the agenda item, I saw that Witt's supposed to be coming next, next month. And I've kind of got the idea, what he's trying to talk about is not asking reps for earmarks, because when you start asking for a road project here or there, they, they run with it, and then it comes from somewhere. So they're going to take it from another project. So I think that's, just to prep you, that's kind of what probably Witt's going to, if I'm correct, is going to be talking about those earmarking items, if I'm correct.
Yes, Commissioner Smith, I think that you are correct, and that's a great segue, as well as Commissioner Carroll's comments about appropriations requests. So one of the items that I did want to mention to you this evening was that as we look at the budget constraints that the state of Florida is going to be experiencing this year, you know, the good news is that the, the estimates, the current estimates are not as bad as they originally thought, but there are still going to be significant shortfalls anticipated both this year as well as next year. One of the strategies that several professional associations are considering this year is, you know, rather than asking for a direct appropriations request, is to try to use this opportunity to look at where we could be streamlining some state regulations and state laws, where we could potentially be expanding funding opportunities, some things that the legislature would have control over that wouldn't necessarily be an outright expenditure. So I wanted to bring that concept to you this year for your consideration, that we, you know, reach out across city departments to get a good list of items along those lines that we'd like to, you know, have conversations about and advocate for this coming year rather than an actual direct appropriations request. You may have seen in the information that was forwarded last evening as well, that particularly in the House of Representatives, Speaker Dusnik Sprouls has made some changes to the appropriation request process. So again, you, you kind of read, the reading between the lines there, they're, they're certainly trying to tighten up that process. They're trying to put more rules and regulations in place as it relates to appropriation requests. And, and as Commissioner Smith alluded to, there is concern here at the local level that, that we do need to be very careful, particularly about projects that are, that are classified as transportation projects. Because if those are, if they do receive a direct appropriations going through the legislative session process, then those funds are removed from FDOT's transportation budget. And then that throws off their five-year work plans and, and, and cause, you know, and that same thing happens as well if, if we, for instance, were successful in getting funding for a sewer project or, so, so that's happening across mult. in getting funding for a sewer project, or, so, so that's happening across multiple state departments. And I think we've seen in the feedback, for instance, that we've received, Merity reminded me the other day, from Senator Brandis repeatedly, you know, he always asks, well, did you apply for this grant? Now, his office has been supportive of appropriations requests, but he personally has always been very quick to say, have you availed yourselves of all of the available grant opportunities that the state provides? So I think we're, you know, beginning to, to kind of get a consistent message that the appropriation requests are certainly not particularly welcomed, and I think in our efforts to continue to build positive relationships with our legislators, I think that, that given the fiscal situation that the state is in right now, we, we might benefit from shifting our strategy just a little bit this year and potentially next year as well. So I wanted to bring that to you as well for your consideration.
When you speak of strategy, Cheryl, one, one technique that you have used that I have personally seen as very, very effective are those information sheets you put out, and had, last time it had to do with the Housing Trust Fund. When you put their smile and face right at the top of the page, and, you know, so expanding on that a little bit, if we, when we communicate with them, with state legislators about what their district and our, and whether, I mean, I'd like to focus on positive information going to them about projects that are either underway or, you know, about to start in their district, so they're informed, probably their staff are going to be informed more than they are, but I thought that was extremely effective in Tallahassee, saying, here's, here's your district, you know, what do you think?
Right.
That's a great strategy.
Develop, with COVID and a lot of things going to Zoom, are, have we been in touch with their office? Because I know we, you know, there's that go up to Tallahassee day, and everybody, you know, runs, runs around and tries to speak to them. Have we reached out to them to see if they're changing things now with their office staff to say, we're not meeting with people like that this time around, and we want to get ahead of that, you know, ball, so we're, we're in those Zoom calls if that's what they're doing?
Yes, we are in the process of doing that. We, we have found that most of the offices are still not open, their staff are still working remotely from home. We are hearing that, you know, they, they are strongly discouraging sort of the legislative action days, at least for this coming legislative session. So we are getting a message that they really don't want to see us up there in large groups.
Not just because of COVID.
Convenient.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what it is.
To jump ahead, Commissioner Robinson reminded me on the 20th of this month, there'll be a legislative roundtable with, for the Suncoast League.
Yes. Yeah, with Senator Brandis and Senator Hooper. And so, Commissioner Smith, to answer some of your questions, the Suncoast League of Cities has been meeting with legislators via, you know, virtually for several months now. The, the executive team, so Commissioner Soraki and myself and Tyler and Trish from Seminole have all been meeting probably at least once a month with the, with the, with one of our legislative delegation, and just to kind of see where they're at, what's going on, so we have an idea, kind of has helped to set our legislative priorities for the Suncoast League of Cities. I think, you know, Cheryl and I have had some conversations about some of the things that, that we've heard from there, and it's also helped, I think, set some of these priorities here. So, so we, yes, we've, I mean, we've been trying to absolutely keep in touch with them, and I think it, you know, that, that's probably going to be the norm for this year as far as, you know, any way of meeting with the legislators, but.
Yeah, well, mine is more just getting on their calendar quick, because if there's lots of groups, because I know that if it's easy, instead of driving up to Tallahassee, you're going to get a lot more requests for them to, to see someone. So I think putting on the radar that our staff would love to talk really quickly and not be, I'm going to take 30 minutes of your time in a Zoom meeting, can you, you know, I'd like to talk to you real quickly about an item that, you know, we've seen on your radar, so outside of, of, of the league, I think, so, all right. Also, one last thing is, there are always things that come up outside of this, so I want the people at home to know that if they read something like this, we're not locking ourselves just on all these items, and we're for or against it. Things always change up there, and there are items that came up that we, the city of Largo care passionately about, that we will, you know, the mayor always sends letters of support on other items, so I don't want someone at home to just think we're only going to be talking about this with them, so.
Excellent, very, very valid point. Thank you very much for mentioning that, appreciate that. I have one last item, just because the legislative, legislators may ask you about it, and that is the city of St. Petersburg, you may have heard about this, is going to be proposing again this year a glitch bill to deal with the penny for funding and the, the uses that Mr. Bussie just spoke with you about, in terms of using the penny for Pinellas funding to acquire land for affordable housing. So the bill was sponsored kind of, you know, didn't, didn't make a lot of progress last year during the session, and there was a concern expressed by our legislative delegation asking the city of St. Petersburg to ensure that all of the, their fellow municipalities were supportive of it, or at least neutral on the bill. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, because as you're meeting with the legislators, they may bring that bill up and ask you whether or not the city of Largo has an opinion. So prior to her departure, Carol Strickland had been working with the city of, of St. Petersburg about that, and at, at this point, we don't have any concerns with what they are, the language that they are proposing. Obviously, you know, we'll continue to monitor it, it, it could experience some changes as it goes through the process, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and make sure that there aren't any proposed revisions to it that would cause concern. But I did want to mention that briefly, just because you may get a question in regards to that, that bill as well. And as soon as we have the bill and the language and everything, I'll, I'll be certain to share that with you, so that you'll, you'll be informed in case you do get any questions in that regard.
So they're not asking for extra money?
No, they're, they're seeking some clarification to assist their city attorneys, yes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not completely sold on the idea the clarification's necessary, but they feel very strongly about that, so we'll look at it when it comes in, but it's, it's probably okay.
And it, it was presented to the mayor's council last week, and there was, there was no, none of the mayors present, it was probably a dozen, so half of us were there, and there was nobody that really had an issue with the way it was kind of put forward. It's not going to really change the way, I mean, like Henry just said, it doesn't seem like it's really going to change the way that money can be used anyways, but it's, I think it's some clarity that the folks in St. Petersburg.
I just wanted to throw this out there, the policy committee that I'm on for Florida League of Cities, the utilities, so two of our priorities in our meeting, last week, I guess it was, was, two of our top priorities were the water quality and environment and the sustainability and resilience. So I was glad to see this on here, because that is one of the things that we're, you know, two of the things out of our nine, I think they had nine priorities, but these two were also in the top three, which, so I was happy to see this on here, so that's, you know, we're working towards that on the policy committee too, so that might help a little bit as far as talking about other things, if, if it's presented through Florida League of Cities also, so.
Yes, definitely.
Happy to see that.
Yeah, the same is true about the sales tax, it's a priority on the finance taxation, so as long as they mesh.
Yes, and I'm, I'm making sure that they do, yes.
So is this going to come back for approval?
Yes, so what I'd like to propose then, the, as, as you alluded to, the Florida League of Cities is finalizing the exact language for their priorities right now, so I will wait till that is available, I'll double-check it against what I have shared with you this evening, and then bring back a final version to you, and along with that, you know, some sort of a one pager kind of summary that, that shows our priorities, if that sounds like an appropriate path forward.
Can we, I mean, is, at that point, can we make sure we share that with the, with the Florida League of Cities as well as the Suncoast League of Cities?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
The only thing I didn't hear you say was maybe like an introductory thing to this document.
Yes, I wanted that as well.
And I, I think it'd be good to talk about how, how well our local delegation has been working with cities like Largo, and, and like kind of talk about, hey, we're, we're all kind of on the same team, and, and this is, this is our, this is our playbook, and we'd like to share it with you type of thing. Maybe not in exactly those terms, but.
Might be a nice article in the Largo Leader.
I don't think that, the Largo Leader's not even there anymore, it's like regional.
Thank you very much.
Next up, a nuisance abatement program, some lien waiver stuff.
Evening, Mayor, how are you?
Doing well.
Good to have me. We're going to try to cut this as quickly as we can, but I've got, I had four items I was going to ask you for some direction on, we pulled one of those, so we'll talk only about three, which is nice, but I know a few months ago, we were asked to give some update, I think it was Commissioner Holmes that asked for an update on nuisance abatement and where we're at, so very quickly, I want to just let you know where we're at with that. With the foreclosure program, which is one of the tools we use for nuisance abatement, we had a total of 19 cases that have moved into the foreclosure process. Of those, 12 of those cases have been resolved, there are seven that are still going through some version of the process. Five of those cases were settled prior to any type of foreclosure action. Ultimately, and we discussed this, and I think the commission supports the fact that we're not trying to take anybody's property from them, we're trying to get some of these properties, these long-term nuisance issues into compliance. Some of those have been great success stories, we've had some really bad properties that have been sold to new owners and been cleaned up, demolished and rebuilt, sold to new owners that want to be here in the city, and that's been a great success for us. We do have several other cases that are in the process right now, but that, that tool that we have through the foreclosure program, when it is used, has been really successful for the city. We brought in a little over 217,000 dollars to the city last year. As you know, a lot of that money got turned back around to the small business COVID relief. We had 98 of those businesses that applied, 80 of those businesses were granted $1,000 for that small, so 80,000 of that 217,000 went right back into our small businesses. And as you know, you've approved the, the Angel Fund program that will be coming in front of you on December 1st under resolution, finalize that so we can start that. We already have several, we'll call them clients, residents, that we believe qualify for the program, that will approach and ask them if we can help them, try to bring their property into compliance, so that's, that's where some of that money's going as well. So we're real excited about that. I did send out 149 letters to people that had liens that might not have been aware that they had liens, these are, some of these cases go back 18, 19 years. The way things were done in the past was a find and forget process that happened across the country, not just in the city of Largo. A lot of these folks didn't realize they owed 500 bucks, 1,000 bucks, they've had property that they've owned the whole time, they've never tried to fore, uh, refinance it, sell it, so they just didn't know that there's been a lien attached on there from back in the day. We haven't had a lot of success, but we've had, if you've been watching, the Code Board Major, Special Magistrate means, we've had a lot of reduction hearings, and most of those are being generated off this letter. The folks are realizing they have it, and then they call our staff, and we get, walk them through. Most of those cases are being reduced for about 320, 330 bucks, which is about the lowest we can go, that's the 250 minimum plus the administrative cost. Again, these properties have been in compliance, a lot of them for several years, long time, they just had these liens hanging out there, so now their titles are clear, and hopefully that's going to help the property owner. So we've been pretty excited about that, and we'll continue to send out letters as we get caught up on some of these older cases. We had been working, and of course, when COVID kicked in, we'd been working on the new residential code lien waiver program for, for new owners. That is coming in front of you as a resolution next week, so you'll see that. That program has been rewritten, that we combined the demolition waiver program and the new homeowner onto one document, one program. We don't get a lot of activity from that, honestly, it's been around now for about four years, but it is another option for new homeowners, new property owners, most of them have been taking the, the reduction hearing approach through the Code Board of the magistrate, and just getting it done that way, it's a little quicker process, but this does give some options out to those other folks. So that program will be coming back in front of you as well. Any questions about any of the nuisance abatement stuff, as far as the foreclosure or anything, before I just jump into the three questions I, I need some direction on?
Just thought, the code lien waiver program for new owners, when you said most of those properties are coming in front of the magistrate or the code board, is that the, the original owner, once they're in compliance, or is the new owner is coming?
It's been a little of both. Most of the times, it's the new, it's, it's the, the former owner, the current owner of the property.
Before they, before they put it on the market to sell?
Right, the process is sort of convoluted, but as you know, because you sign a lot of these documents, some of these partial releases, liens and things like that, they might sell a property, the new owner of the property does a partial release of lien, so now they're clear and the property's clear, but that still leaves a lien attached on to the former owner that's attached on to their name. They might own another piece of property in Pinellas County, so that lien can technically attach on to that property, and the city could go after it to try to recover their funds. So those folks are still coming in and doing a reduction, which we're certainly happy to do, we've got one coming in tomorrow, or two of them on Thursday will be doing reduction hearings as well. We're doing about three or four at each hearing, one at the Code Board of the magistrate, so that's been great for us, because we've had a lot of older cases that we're getting off the books, the city's recovering at least our initial funds out of it, but the most important thing is that the titles are clear, the properties are in compliance, so we're.
So if there's still a lien, the, the lien reduction program for a new owner, it, it could give a little bit of certainty to that purchaser before, if they know that that program's available, they can.
That, that is an option for them. We're seeing a lot of these with, we're working quietly behind the scenes with a lot of the title companies, people are trying to sell these homes, the market's really good for selling in Pinellas County right now, as we all know. Some of that money, if they're owing a certain amount of money, they're, we can't get them on our calendar fast enough for their closing dates, so they're putting that money in the escrows to the title companies, then they're going through the reduction and then clearing it up afterward. So there's a lot of moving parts that have been happening with these, but it's been pretty successful. Any other questions I can answer about the stuff we got going on? Okay. So here's the question I'm, I, I have for the commission, I just need some direction on, if you don't mind. One of the things that came up, Mayor, and I think this was a, a topic that you had brought up, was the discussion about capping fines. That has been a hot topic through the code enforcement community, and not only Tampa Bay, we certainly have seen the city to our north that had sort of got lambasted because of some code issues. They actually just passed their first reading of a cap on their fines for that city, Bradenton also just put caps on theirs. It certainly makes sense that we don't have fines that are running at $250 a day that go to a property that's worth $150,000, that's got a million-dollar lien on it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. That's just the way it was done forever, that's the way, again, because of the find and forget theory, those fines just kept on running on homesteaded pieces of properties, a lot of them, and people just didn't fix them. My recommendation is that we use ACAP, and I think the best way for us to set it for us, where we have a understanding of what the real value of the property is, is use the Pinellas County Property Appraiser website. So when we take a case to a first hearing, and there's a, first, a lien placed on the property for, say, a violation, a Code Board magistrate finds a violation, there's a lien placed on it, and then it goes to the second hearing, then the second lien, that's the official lien, that's second lien. The first one is really putting other people on notice that the city has some vested interest in that property. On the property appraisers website, for any property in Pinellas County, you'll see something that says it's called a just market value of the property. Now, this year, it might be this, next year, depending on market values, it could go up dramatically, if you're down dramatically, depending on how the market is. But using the Pinellas County Property Appraisers just market value, I think that we have a good number that we could say that's the cap. So if it goes to the first hearing, they're found in violation, that's the max that this property could be on, so.
And that cap wouldn't fluctuate with the market?
That's correct. If, if, if the market crashes next, January 1st, doesn't matter. If it goes up and the value is worth triple, it doesn't, I, I think at some point, we've got to say, okay, this is our line, and.
It's just a lot, it's a lot easier, and, and it's a reasonable cap, I think.
And again, the goal is with the new programs that we've got in place, we're certainly hoping that we're never going to get up to these maxes. There's a lot of new processes in place with the letter programs and the foreclosure programs and the, the lien reductions, the new waiver, the new homeowner waiver programs that are hopefully going to be in place to allow these folks. in place to allow these folks to deal with their fines much quicker, much faster. There will be the occasional case where the people just refuse to pay it. It's gonna go to the max, and it's gonna stop there. But I think that the processes we have in place and the tools we have now, we're gonna have a lot less of those, and that's the goal, to do that. So if, if you're okay with that, I'd like to bring that back. That's gonna be an ordinance change. We're gonna have to change a little, a few things in Chapter Nine. We're also gonna have to change the fee ordinance as far as how we fine and do that. So if it's okay, I'd like to bring something back to you at a first reading with some changes to the, to a cap on the max and the fines.
The cap would be the just market value on the day that the fine is assessed?
That's correct.
Well, you know, the only thing I would add to that, Tracy, is if we're gonna cap it, and the goal is to get, first of all, the goal is compliance.
Yes, sir.
And then expeditiously taking care of whatever fine is due. And the third component of that is, there has to be some changes to the fine forgiveness. The way the Code Board can basically just waive the fine. You know what I mean? There has to be some teeth in the enforcement side of it.
Absolutely. Well, and again, you know, one of the recent ordinances that was passed the other day was passed at twenty times the daily amount. So let's say that we fine them at $50 a day, times twenty. So that's a very small max. Because that fine is, my opinion, the fine is gonna be so low that it doesn't give the Code Board or the magistrate a lot of teeth to get them into compliance. So I think that by taking it at least to the just market value, it still allows us to put some pressure on the property owners to come into compliance. But we can, the goal is never to reach the cap. You know, we're, we're working really hard with people now. The communication is completely different than it was ten years ago, fifteen years ago. Now that we have a dedicated team, dedicated managers to do nothing but focus on these things. When it was attached to the building division, the building official was, this was a sidebar. And, you know, it just sort of got, just kept them fines running. And, you know, we don't want that to happen anymore.
No, I think, I think you're on the right track. All I'm saying is, if we're gonna put a number out there that it's the market value of the property and allow that thing to run until it reaches that, which you're not gonna, you've taken all, you've just explained all that. Then when it comes before the Code Board, there's gonna have to be some, or the magistrate, there has to be some extraordinary reason to reduce that fine.
If it goes a reduction.
You know, I mean, it's like, get it fixed, come into compliance. That's the easiest way out, right?
It's always the easiest way out. And again, you know, honestly, eighty-five percent, somewhere between eighty-five and ninety percent of all of our cases come into voluntary compliance, either prior to first hearing or once the Code Board or magistrate sets, you've got thirty more days and that's it. They almost always come into compliance. We're only, we're really dealing with about ten percent of the cases that end up starting a fine and unfortunately get a lien that gets attached on to the property. So it's, it looks ugly when we have two or three thousand cases a year, but in reality, we're talking about, you know, a hundred and fifty cases, two hundred cases a year that really are the ones we're chasing all the time.
That would still be up to the discretion of the code enforcement board, though, right? Or the magistrate?
Yeah, so I guess it's more of a philosophical, I mean, right now, somebody in years past, and I haven't been on the Code Board as the liaison for a while, but in some years, there wasn't, didn't seem to be a lot of guidance for the latitude. You know, I mean, the attorney would say that it could go down to a minimum number. And people on the board, you know, empathize with the property owner and say, well, you've got $10,000 worth of fines here, but we're gonna settle it for 300 bucks and that kind of thing. So somewhere in the middle is where I think we want to be.
Well, and we're, one of the items that we're gonna talk about here is discretion, the criteria for reductions. We, we set that about, about a year and a half ago. We added some language into Chapter Nine to give the Code Board and the Special Magistrate some clear understanding of what the criteria was for that. And what you probably haven't seen, because Commissioner Holmes has been on the board for most of this time since we did that, is we now do a case history report. I read every case. Some of these cases are very old when they come to reduction. A lot of the Code Board members, except for maybe Ms. Savorelli, weren't on the board when this, these happened. So we do an education. We read a, this is how many inspections we've done. This is how many times we were out there to try to get voluntary compliance on that. So they have a clear understanding of some of these cases. They really don't know anything about before they make a decision. They do ask me every time, does the staff have an opinion on what it is? I do not ever give that opinion. The board set the fines, I let them reduce the fines. There are some cases, I'd love to say what they really dragged us through, but we leave that to the board or the magistrate to make that decision. It's.
No, I think you've made incredible strides. I love the way.
We're getting there. We're getting there. We gotta.
And we are helping people that, that absolutely, you know, older people that just can't, they don't have the money and they don't have the means or.
Well, there's certainly a lot of ways that we do that. Between community standards, housing, now that we have the Angel Fund about, about to come online here in a couple of weeks.
So we're giving them some directions. Just, it's not just saying, get this done. We're.
And it is, those are some of the most frustrating cases for us because we have clear code violations. A lot of these properties are in very bad shape. They're homesteaded properties, so we have two choices. We, you know, we settle, as we talked about with the Angel Fund, you set a fine, now they have a fine running against them, which we know they can't pay, but they also can't afford to pay to get the repairs done. It certainly will be a discussion we'll have in a couple of weeks here about the Angel Fund and maybe how much each case is allowed to have. We've currently set that at a certain amount, and we'll talk about that. And you guys, if you want us, want me to change that, we'll do that.
Those are most of the cases where you, where you want to be compassionate and help people, but there are properties in our city where the property owner is like running a junkyard or something, you know, and the neighbors get tired of it.
I've seen them.
So those are the ones, those are the ones you want to be able to handle.
Yeah, we got a couple of those right now. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, if it's okay, what I'm understands, I'm gonna, I'm gonna draft some language and get that to you for a first reading. Thank you. The next item, as we talked about, we do have a foreclosure program in place. Many of these cases do come into compliance at some point, and they ask to settle those cases prior to a foreclosure action, a final foreclosure, which we're completely fine with. The whole idea was to get them into compliance. But at that point, now that we've engaged our foreclosure attorney, Mr. Widener, we now have hard costs involved. So we don't just make those go away, and it's not gonna be reduced. They don't have an option to take that to a reduction hearing. They have to, there's two options. It goes to foreclosure or they settle. And we have a, a scale that we use for how much it generally gets reduced down to. A settlement offer is made either by their party or our party, it's accepted, and then goes, currently goes to Allen or the legal staff, goes to Mr. Schubert, and then eventually, currently, you guys have seen several of these come across your table. But we also know that back in 2019, March of nineteen, commission authorized Mr. Schubert to make decisions on which cases go. You guys said you didn't want to see those cases again. Mr. Schubert can make that decision with the staff as which ones we're gonna send to commission. Also, back several years ago, there was some discussion about foreclosures as well. What I would like to do, and what we've discussed with Mr. Schubert, and we've discussed with Mr. Zimmet, is allowing Mr. Schubert to be able to sign off on these settlement agreements prior to commission getting involved. Unless you guys want to hear all these cases. And the reason why some of these cases are small cases, some of them are a little bit larger, but a lot of these settlements are $5,000, $10,000, things of that nature. And there, it does drag out a few things, you know, it takes a lot of time to get in front of the commission to get final, you know, settlement agreement with that. And I've spoken with Mr. Schubert, spoken with Mr. Zimmet. And certainly, they wanted commission's approval to do that. So what are your, your thoughts on that?
I'll prepoint. Is there a situation where somebody's offering a settlement, whether it's us or them?
Currently, right now, we have, we had, we've had five this year already. Currently, we have three that are in, I'll call them negotiations, that we're trying to get them there. One, I do have a settlement agreement that was sent to us today that depending on what this decision is, would come in front of you for a settlement offer after Mr. Zimmet approves it. They, they do happen. Honestly, we'd like them to happen because we don't, again, we don't want to foreclose anybody's property.
In order to consider a settlement agreement, the property is in compliance, correct?
Has to be. Has to be. That's, that's the minimum requirement is, we don't settle any case if they've got open code cases.
I mean, I, from my perspective, Henry, you're, you're good with this concept, right? Do you have any authority, settlement authority?
Yeah, and, and, and sometimes the settlement offer is more persuasive if the person can settle it quickly.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, when the opposite is true, when money's going out the door, and we're settling with somebody else, you always come ask us about that. But it's money coming in, settlements coming in, I don't, I mean, I think that certainly would be within.
We're still gonna have a review by Mr. Zimmet on all the legal things. And, and Mr. Schubert or Mr. Zimmet, for that matter as well, can always say, I think this one needs to go in front of commission. We always have the option to bring it in front of you.
That's what I kind of want, is if, extraordinary ones that you feel that we should all kind of see or bring to our attention, because there are some times that, I mean, some of the stuff we wouldn't have talked about had, you know, Commissioner Holmes was on the board most of the time. So I think seeing those sometimes keep it on our radar as citizens, but I think giving you the discretion, I think, is fine. I just don't want it to be pushed away from the board, the commission that we're not seeing things like that.
Yeah, we can do two things. Yeah, yeah, sometimes I will bring something to you for your approval, even if it's within my authority. Occasionally, that'll happen in purchasing, for instance, where even though it's, it's under the $50,000 threshold, we feel it's, there's some sensitivity to it. We, we could also report to you all of these after the fact, so you, you are informed as to what's going on, and, and you can see whether you feel comfortable with my decision-making, basically.
Like a quarterly report or?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna ask, what avenue would you, just, just like the claims or the the other settlement reports that we get occasionally?
Yeah, we could do. I certainly could do any type of a quarterly report to Mr. Schubert, and he can send it to you or however you'd like. We can do a workshop a couple of times a year.
I think just a quarterly report would make sense. I write and report. Yeah.
Wouldn't be unlike the old risk committee stuff, right?
Yeah.
The opposite.
With that being said, I do have it on schedule for next week as well. So that's there. So you'll see that at the commission meeting, the finalized set, if that's okay. From what Alan said, it needed to be in front of a commission meeting.
Let's do what Alan says.
Do my best. Okay, and the last one, and I'll get out of your way. We talked a couple minutes ago about the criteria for reductions. One of the criteria that got put on, and, and I apologize that I guess I, I missed it, or we didn't draft this language, but I certainly could have, should have caught it, says that if a case is a result of a repeat violator, it cannot be reduced. So in code enforcement, if you've got a case, and let's say you've got a high grass case, and you were found in violation, and you paid your fine, it was fine. Within a five-year period, you get another high grass case, that's now considered a repeat violator case. And let's say fines are accrued from that. That case, currently on the criteria we have for reductions, cannot be heard. So we had a new property owner that bought the property, wanted to reduce. He had five cases on the properties he bought. He bought two properties. There was five total cases, $1.6 million. We took three of those cases to reduction because they weren't repeat violator cases. But two of them, we couldn't reduce because they were repeat. Even though this gentleman had nothing to do with the cases, these cases happened several years ago before he was ever involved in this case. But because the language says that he's a repeat, it was a repeat violator case, we couldn't reduce. So that, those cases are still sitting out there. Those liens are still attached on to him. I told him, take a breath, I need to talk to commission about some things, and here we are.
So, um,
Yes, sir.
The, if there's five, the, the three that were not repeat or.
Been reduced and gone.
And, and so they were, they were violations that were unique, like the, the two were like the same violation two or three times or whatever.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I think.
So the violation follows the property, not the person?
It can. And again, there's, there's some steps once a property is sold, and we see that happen a lot with code violations where they try to flip it and change it. And then we, we get involved with the new property owners, and they do the partial releases, but then the liens are still attached on to your name and follows you for twenty years. That's a different segue, but, so here's, we got two problems with that language, and then I've got this. These cases are repeat violator cases that are eligible. Well, in perfect world, they would be eligible for reduction. They're in compliance. Some of these cases are very old, some of them are fairly new. But because they're homesteaded properties, they can't afford to pay some of these, some of these fines are in the tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars. They can't afford to pay it. But it's also homesteaded, so I can't do anything against them, so they're just gonna sit there. I would like to propose that we maybe consider allowing repeat violators to take a one-time bite at maybe a higher minimum cost to reduce, to give these people one more chance at it. Some of these cases, these folks might have been twenty-five years old, thirty years old when they got it. It's been sitting for fifteen years. They're forty-five years old, they're mature, they made a mistake, they had these fines against them. But they can't do anything with it because they can't afford to pay it. They can't sell their property, they can't refinance their property because the title searches keep catching these liens. We have four options, and I just really quick gonna run them through you. Currently, leave it the way it is. And say, you know what? They're repeat violators, they should have known better, they've done it before, they did it again. But we're gonna be stuck where we're at. These cases are just gonna sit. Option two is to change the ordinance to allow new owners, which is the first example I gave you, allow new owners who buy a property to bring it, that's a repeat case, to bring it in front of us. But only new owners, not the, not the actual violator. That's better than nothing because it certainly would have helped that new owner that's still stuck with about $40,000 in liens that can't, that can't get off his property right now. Option three, and I will tell you, this is staff's recommendation, is to change the ordinance to allow repeat violators to be heard one time, but at a higher rate than what right now we have. If you're not a repeat violator as a case, you get $250 as the minimum plus administrative cost. We'd like to bring the repeat violators, but give them one more shot, but there's gotta be some punishment so they don't do it a third time, or a fourth time, or a fifth time, is maybe set this at $500 or $1,000 plus administrative cost. That would require me to do a small change in the ordinance, change some language in the criteria again, but also change the fee schedule to allow for that repeat violator case. And the fourth option, which starts to get a little convoluted, a little bit harder to manage as far as the staff side of things, is to allow if it's a second violation or a first-time repeat, it's at this. If it's a third-time repeat, it's at this. If it's a fourth-time repeat, it's at this. I think at some point, they're not, I don't know if they're learning their lesson, if we're gonna allow them to continue to violate four or five times the same code violation. But we're certainly willing to, and happy to do whatever the commission would like, but I would like to be able to give these folks an opportunity. I'm gonna use this almost as an election thing. When does a convicted felon get the right to vote again? You know, if you made a mistake, at some point, do we give them one, do we give them one more option? Do, do we give them one more option, or do we leave it the way it's at? So.
Some forgiveness somewhere, you know.
So I also think, though, that there's two different categories there, right? I mean, you have some home, some property owners who are, who are repeat violators, and then you have this other category that it's somebody who purchased a house that had a violation on it in, in the past that they probably knew nothing about. And, and, right, so that's, that's the other case that you have.
Yeah, that's a smaller number. Most of these are, are homesteaded, repeat violators that just, they're going, what are you gonna do?
No, I, I understand that. And, and I think, though, yeah, I mean, I think that, in my personal opinion, I think that they can have, you know, your, your option three there. So they have one more bite at the apple, it's at a higher rate, that, and then that's it. And then, you know, there's no more, no more reductions after that. But this other case, though, you're talking about, that might not be as, as common, it doesn't seem fair to charge that guy at a higher rate than we would a normal reduction because he was not the original violator. The property had a violation on it.
That's correct. We'd clean that language up, too. If you're gonna tell me option three is an option, we'll clean up that poor guy that bought the property, cleaned it up, did everything. But he was never the violator. I think we'd try to clean that language up and clarify that.
I would, that's what I would like to see.
Wasn't there a problem, though, also on the search? Like, when you're buying that property, there was, there was a case, you said that they were buying the property, they bought it, and that did not come up, and that lien was not in the search.
That's what you have title insurance for, but sometimes, as we mentioned at that last commission meeting, we talked about this. That's what you have title insurance for, but sometimes, as we mentioned at that last commission meeting, we talked about this. Flippers are very competitive, they buy these properties sight unseen. That burned-out shell that we had sitting out there in Belcher, for, that I finally got torn down and everything, that gentleman paid $80,000 for it, and he said, I drove by the night before, it was dark, he didn't see it, there was no roof.
It wasn't on fire when he drove by.
So, so when he bought it the next morning at 10 o'clock, I met him over there, I said, do you know what you bought? And of course, we looked at it, and he was, you know, he had 24 hours to back out of the sale, but he kept it, and he by his word, he tore it down, he's gonna build something there, and now, understand that these are repeat violators, and reductions are always voluntary, correct? We can't make them do it, but right now, I can't even offer it to them. What I'd like to do, I need a tool to be able to offer them for a reduction, that's what I'd like to do. If they tell me no, I'm not gonna do it, well, then they'll sit in the drawer for 20 years till the lien drops off. But I'd like to be able to give these folks an opportunity to clean up their titles, and have one more bite at the apple, if I could, at maybe a different rate.
I would definitely support that, especially on the new owner's side, and you're gonna, you're talking about capping the fines into fair market value.
And I will tell you, I did approach this question to the code board, who has an unanimous decision to allow repeats to come. The code board voted 20 years ago to allow that, but it's somewhere along the line, 20 years ago, it died, it never made it to commission, or somewhere, so it never happened, they were asking to do repeats back then. We did do it in front of the special magistrate, magistrate supported it completely, and I did bring it in front of the CDEB advisory board, and they supported it as well, so they, we did bring it in front of our three groups that are hearing or seeing these cases as well, and they all supported, they wouldn't, they'd be okay with hearing repeat violator cases.
So, one, I think Commissioner Carroll was talking about this a little bit, one thing that I've heard from code enforcement board people is that if the property's in compliance, it seems like it's almost a done deal, that it's gonna be reduced down to the minimum. And I kind of have some heartburn with that. And I know we've had, we had somebody walk into a code enforcement board, and I think they had representation, and that person said, we'd like to settle for $10,000, when the staff was like, I'm gonna put the minimum thing aside, you know, okay, we'll take that. You know, so I think that we have to make sure the code board is willing to to treat second offenders or multiple offenders a little bit different than, and even without mandating that. You know, so, I'm perfectly fine, especially with the new owners, to have them come back. And I think that we would just, for somebody that owns a house, and it's homesteaded, and they're the one that's violated, I still think that they should be able to have a shot at getting a reduction, if they've cleaned up the place, and they've changed their ways, and they can convince the seven people on the code enforcement board, or the magistrate, or whoever, that they're gonna keep it that way. As long as that information is made to the board, I don't mind allowing them to have a full reduction. I just don't think they always should get a full reduction.
I will tell you, the code board doesn't always give a full reduction. We had a gentleman that came late last year, he had two properties, he came two months in a row. One day, he, they gave him the reduction down to about 350 bucks, they saw him again the next month, they charged him 5,000. They don't always do that, there was a lot of $500 recently, even though the minimums were 320, 330 dollars. So the code board does have a tendency to round up the 400 or 500 dollars.
So how would you track, how do you currently track that, if it's a second violation within five years?
Through our system, through Tracket, we see the violations, we've got them all in the system, so if we know it's a violation, sometimes it's a little harder, five years isn't so bad, but some of the ordinances have changed, we've changed new computer systems, so sometimes we have to do a little bit of due diligence, and pull the old cases to see if that's a repeat violation, or is it technically just a little bit off? Because if it's not the same violation, then it's not a repeat. So you could have a property maintenance code, which talks about junk trash and debris, but it might fall under high grass, and that was really, the violation was a high grass issue, it was over the 12 inches. But, you know, if we're not careful, we could miss that and say, that's a repeat case, so we have some checks and balances, any case that goes in front of the code board goes in front of Mr. Jensen, our code enforcement supervisor, and then it comes to me, and then to pay on, it goes in front of Isabella, who is either the board, you know, council, or she represents us as the prosecutor for the magistrate. So Isabella sees all those cases as well, so there's a couple of checks and balances to capture that. I mean, we do have the opportunity, if this is the time, to change the minimum. Instead of 250 plus administrative costs, if we think this needs to be higher, lower, I mean, this is an opportunity to do that as well.
I would almost say to not change the minimum, but make it clear to the code enforcement board that it is a repeat viola, this is a repeat violation.
They know that, that's on the agenda, on every case, you'll see it, big bold letters, repeat violator, right next to the case number, so they see that.
If you make the minimum $1,000, my guess is that most of them would be at the new minimum. Because it's a repeat violator minimum, so.
But right now, we don't collect any of that, because they just sort of sit here in the drawer.
No, I understand, but I think that, as Commissioner Carroll said, we need to have some teeth, and the code board is there to hopefully encourage these people to stay in compliance moving forward.
Along that same line of thought, we've made some changes in the way, or there's some proposed changes in the way these fines are used going forward. When the fines went into the general fund, like parking tickets, you know? Sometimes it can be frustrating to somebody sitting in judgment of those cases, but if the code board clearly understands that we're gonna go a different direction with making the city look better, beautification-type projects, or help people, then probably they would be more inclined to adhere to a fine schedule, and there'd be nothing arbitrary about it, I would think. I mean, they're very good at what they do, I enjoyed my time on the code board. And sort of like traffic court, you can see when somebody's not making a good impression on the board, and they get a little higher fine. But, anyway, I think you're doing great things, but I don't know, also, I want to make sure they know that we have an eye on doing some different things with these fines, revenues coming in, to help the community.
So your recommendation, though, would be to have an increased minimum for?
For repeat cases.
For repeat cases that are not new owners.
That's correct.
To clear that up, what would be, like, a justice, in your mind, what would be, 1,000, 500?
I think at least 500, but our recommendation was 1,000. Again, right now, they can't do anything, I don't know if they can pay $1,000, I don't know, so.
Can we offer?
We could do 500, which is double what the minimum is right now, and if the code board elects to make it 1,000, that's certainly their preview to do that. The code board might look at that and say, you know, this is a repeat case, and I don't think, we do 250, or we do 500 for a lot of our first-time offenders, so we're gonna make it higher than that, but, you know, that's the code board, that's their decision, we sort of stay out of the way of that.
And when they're offered this, they have, what, 30 days to pay that amount?
If it goes in front, and the code board, the magistrate grants the reduction, they give them 30 days to pay that. If not, it goes back to the original amount, and they don't get a second, the ordinance says they don't have a second option on that.
So we don't have any, like, payment plan?
And I will tell you, which shockingly enough, there are a number of cases sitting in the drawers from a long time ago that went in front of the code boards over the years, that were reduced way down, 10 cents on the dollar, and the folks didn't take advantage of it, and it's gone back up, it's rare. Since I've been here, I can't remember out of the, we've probably done 100 reduction cases in the time I've been here, I don't know of anybody that didn't take advantage of the reduction. Most folks realize they're getting a gift. Reductions are not required by statute, it's something the city of Largo does, not every city does it. We do have that tool there for these folks, it's an encouragement to bring them into compliance and get them there, and so we do have some success with that program, that's what helped out a lot.
Compliance is the goal, encouraging those old cases would be a secondary goal, and go forward.
It's huge for us to get those old cases off the books if we can.
So if somebody is a repeat offender on high grass, and they get a reduction down to the new minimum, whatever it is, and then they have high grass again within five years?
No reduction.
No reduction.
No reduction.
And, but if they have high grass again, and six years after they're settled?
They're considered a brand-new violator. Statute is set for that. And we, honestly, we don't have to always bring those cases. That's a decision at the code, at staff level, because there are some extenuating circumstances. We might have the person that's physically unable to do something, or financially is in a hardship, it's ultimately up to the code officer to bring that as a repeat. The statute allows us to, we don't do it on every case, we do it on most, because that's how you get people's attention, so they stop doing things. But we certainly understand that there are certain situations out there where we don't bring it in front of them.
And that's where those other avenues you're proposing come in.
So the Angel Program should help alleviate some of?
We're hoping it's gonna help with, you know, 20 or 30 cases a year in the beginning, based on the funding we've got. I said, we've got several cases right now lined up that we're gonna be approaching here, right after the resolution next month. Okay, so if it's okay, I'll bring you some language on that as well, if that's fine. That's all I have, unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Since you're here, I have a question about, I know that a couple months ago, we kind of pulled back on sign regulations for COVID, for restaurants and that type of stuff. So I wondered where we are with that, I've noticed some businesses have seemed to take full advantage of our pullback.
We've actually done a lot of enforcement, right after we all came back from COVID, as, you know, most of my staff was sent home for about two months. When we came back on June 15th, Carol and I had some discussions about it, and there had been two or three months of the businesses being able to do what they gotta do, and us turning a blind eye to it, for the most part. We've enforced a lot of those, especially up and down Missouri and East Bay. A couple of things that we're going to do, so you know, Mayor, where we're heading with this, is currently, I've had an officer that's been on light duty for four months, I lost an officer to an internal position the other day. So we have a new code officer coming, I'm hoping here in the next month or so. We had a meeting this morning to discuss our options, we have, currently, we have four zones in the city, we have four code officers, and we had a code arborist that was handling this. But as you guys know, the legislation changed a few years ago, as far as the homeowners bill of rights, that really reduced the amount of tree permits that the arborist was working on. So we were supplementing him with code cases. We did cross-training last week with the arborist before he left to go to the new job, and we've trained all the officers now on how to do the arborist duties, as far as reviewing tree permits, new construction, final inspections. What that did is that allowed me to create a fifth code officer. That's, so now I have five that I can either, I've got two choices, either I split the city up into five zones instead of four, so each officer has a little bit less to do, so they can maybe do a little bit of proactive, or what we discussed, and what I think we're gonna try to do, is we've created a new commercial code officer position. And that officer, he or she, whichever one we select, will focus certainly on BTRs, signs, commercial sign issues, which is gonna be a bulk of their work. So we'll be able to focus a lot of that. Now, we do have a program that's scheduled here, hopefully, in the next few weeks, where we're going to address some sign issues on commercial, on the convenience stores, and some of the life safety issues with the police department, about not being able to see into the store at night, the clerks not being able to see the officers out in the parking lot. So we're gonna focus our first, we'll call it a wave, on those convenience stores and stuff, to do some life safety for the clerks, to protect them a little bit, so we will be doing that here soon. I just got the officer that was on light duty, she just got released last week, so I've got, I've got four now, so that's where we're at. Okay, cool, and do you have, is there an officer that works on the weekends currently? No, sir. Okay. I, if there's a call, and we do get the occasional call from the police department on something of dire importance, I come in, generally. I'm on salary, that's what I do, and I come in. So, I did that two weeks, I was here two weeks ago on a Saturday, addressing somebody cutting down a tree without a permit. A city employee called me from home, they live next door, and the tree was being cut down, they knew there wasn't a permit, and they called me, so I came out and stopped it. And then we handled, I handed that off to the tree arborist on Monday, when he came back into work. So there is some response, it took me about 20 minutes to get in. Okay, thank you. I like all the stuff we're doing here. Thanks, sir, I appreciate it.
I did one thing.
Yeah, mine?
Was there clear, what was the amount that you were looking at? I'm just curious, what you thought we were shooting, or what are you looking at?
I was gonna write it up as the minimum in the code, and the fee for 1,000, unless the commission wants it some other direction. I can do 500, I can, I wanna make it, the goal is to get them, certainly, they've gotta understand the repeat, they shouldn't be held to the same standard as somebody's first-time violator. But at the same point, if I make it too high, I'm still at the same problem, that some of them aren't gonna be able to pay it, so there's, I'm trying to do a balancing act, because each case is different, but at some point, we've gotta set a fine amount.
Can we do 650?
650 or 750?
I mean, 1,000's kind of up there, I guess, and this is kind of up, but.
Do I have a consensus?
There's gonna be a third offender, right?
Yeah, but those, again, we wouldn't entertain if they're a third-time violator.
That's what I'm saying, they'll be back, and you can get the money then. If you can't learn for, you know.
Oh, split the difference at 750?
750.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Lost my agenda, but I think we're on the city hall.
Yeah, and I'll just make a, just a couple brief opening remarks on this. Yeah, what we're gonna do this evening is do a quick review of the city hall project, where we are to date. As we all know, this is one of the most significant projects that the city is going to ever enter into. You know, for the benefit of those folks at home, we're not just building a new city hall for city administration, but more importantly, this is moving city hall back to downtown, where I think most people believe that it belongs. This is an economic development project, for the city to make a significant investment in a project in the downtown, that we hope will attract other investment as well. And particularly, we feel it'll be important for the downtown, because it is a mixed-use project, so it's not just a city hall building, but it will also have a retail and commercial component. We've split the presentation into two parts this evening, with two separate individuals. First of all, our public works director, Matt York, who is also the project manager for the new city hall. He's gonna go over the, I guess, more or less, the expenditure side of the project, and the timeline associated with that. And then we're gonna have our finance director, Kim Adams, discuss with you at a fairly high level the proposed financing for the project, which will be much more complicated, complex than we're used to, because there's a lot of moving parts on a project like this. I'm just gonna make a couple comments about just one part of Matt's presentation today, which is the property acquisition. I am working directly with a commercial realtor, who's in discussions with certain property owners in the downtown for possible purchase of their properties. Part of that team includes Alan Zimmert, our city attorney. Once we feel like we can achieve what we think is a fair price for properties, we would get them under a, under contract, so to speak, and bring those to the city commission then, for your final consideration. So that, that's obviously a very important part of this project, is to secure the necessary property to make it happen. But with that, let me go ahead and turn it over to Mr. York, who can talk about the update on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Schubert, and thank you commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to come and talk about this exciting project that we have going on here in the city. Back a couple months ago, September 8th, we had, came in this virtual room, I believe it was, and we discussed this project, and we're discussing the process of ASD Sky, and how they finished up phase one, and gave you guys kind of an idea of where we're at with the end of phase one. Since that time, and September 1st, we came and talked about the C Mar being put on board with Biltmore. That project contract will be on the agenda for next Tuesday night. For Biltmore is the C Mar, and also the ASD Sky, phase two and phase three contracts, which will be the design and the construction portion of ASD Sky's responsibilities. So both of those will be on the agenda for next week. Obviously, Mr. Schubert just talked a little bit about property acquisition. And now I'm gonna Um, and now I'm gonna kinda talk a little bit about the numbers and kind of where we're at, moving into the, uh, kind of the totality of the project. The property acquisition, obviously, we are, uh, still currently looking at the, uh, the proposed, uh, site area that was, um, discussed at that, that meeting, um, the Fourth Avenue, or, um, Fourth Street Northwest and West Bay area. There are, uh, a number of properties that need to be purchased, um, within there. There's three different property owners that we are dealing with. Um, we're hoping, um, that the purchase price of that ranges somewhere between the $2 to $3 million, um, area. Um, so that'll be kind of the first part of the, of the cost, um, associated with this project. So for the timeline, let's, we'll just go real quick through what the timeline of the project is gonna be. From, from the time Phase One was over until now, ASD Sky really hasn't done a whole lot because I really don't, they can't design, um, for a building that we don't have property for. Like, my example is, it's not McDonald's. You can't just slap it down on whatever corner we want to. It's, this is gonna be very unique to whatever the, the footprint is. So, um, they have kind of slowed their process down a little bit. Um, this, the C Mar, um, hasn't really gotten going yet because they don't have a contract yet. And once we get the C Mar under, uh, contract, um, hopefully at the end of the meeting next week, um, there will be a lag before that they have the opportunity to start, um, with their notice to proceed due to the fact, I don't want them, um, spinning their wheels and spending our money on a project, part of, a portion of a project that may not be completed or may not be in the right location. So, um, once the property is, um, acquired, or we're close enough that we can start moving down the, the, um, design train, um, the railroad on that one, uh, it's about 13 to 15 months, um, is what, um, ASD Sky is saying. So about, you know, 15 months long, um, that'll be able to get us through, um, citizens' input, which we are in the process of, um, hopefully getting out some material to the residents, um, either right before the holidays or right after the holidays, we can start some of that part of the process. But that'll get us through citizens' input, that'll get us through, um, um, the 50% drawings, all the way up through 100% drawings. We'll be 13 to 15 months out. So if we, if we use December 1st as a, as a good marker, then we're talking January 1st of 2022 to start construction. From that point on, construction will take somewhere between 16 to 19 months. It's all dependent on a lot of different things, uh, materials and, you know, how fast we can actually get it done, weather, and hopefully we don't have, you know, 75, you know, tropical storms like we had this year. Um, so hopefully we can get to a point that we, we've got a good, a good span of time between 16 to 19 months. And that is hopefully from, um, groundbreaking to ribbon cutting is 19 months. That's kind of the goal of the project. So now we wanna talk money, and this is what the exciting part about this is for everybody, and, um, you know, hold your hearts while, um, you make sure they keep beating while we talk about these things. So the C Mar is gonna cost us about $303,000. That's what their contract is gonna be for next week, $303,000. ASD Sky's contract for Phase Two of the portion of the project is $1,962,500. And if we add in the $3 million, um, that we're hoping that we get it under, about $3 million for a real estate purchase, that puts our total pre-construction cost at So that is pre-construction costs. Um, that'll be, um, when Mr. Adams talks about financing, there'll kind of be, there's kind of two different waves. There's a pre-construction cost financing, and then the actual construction cost financing. So fi, just over five point, almost $5.3 million pre-construction.
Oh, the 1.9 million is what you're kinda wanting to put a hold, not spinning the wheels, correct?
Um, no, it's the $303,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the C Mar contract. So, once we really get the land and, and ASD Sky starts to develop the design, that's when the C Mar will be signed on for. And we'll be able to get them in right at the beginning of the design portion of the project. Okay? So, um, Phase Two for ASD Sky and the C Mar for Biltmore, um, will kind of come in at the same time, and they'll come in on the, on the back end of, um, finding property. So once a property is, uh, maybe not purchased, but we're, you know, in negotiations and we've got, you know, uh, Mr. Schubert gives us to go ahead to start the design portion of it, then that's where that will start.
Yeah, so essentially, when the property was under contract, uh, the project, the closing could actually occur several months after it's, um, contracted for.
Sorry, go ahead. Will those be locked in? Because are we gonna be coming back? I, I just, my curiosity is, are we gonna keep getting adjustments every time, until we buy these properties and sit on them?
So the $303,000 and the 1.962 million, those two numbers will be, um, under contract, not to exceed amounts, as of next Thursday, or next Tuesday?
They won't be locked into?
They will, those, those are gonna be locked in costs.
Yes.
Yeah, the big fluctuation in cost is going to be on the building side, and, um, as we go through the next one, that's the number that could fluctuate. Um, because if we, uh, cost of concrete today is not gonna be the cost of concrete in five years, so, or three years or two years. So we've put some fudge factor in there, we've put some contingencies in there, um, and we also need to realize that the C Mar hasn't done their job yet either. So our number that we have for the construction of the building, hopefully, we'll be able to find, uh, different ways of doing things which will reduce costs as well. So, so, um, when Mr. Adams comes in and, and talks about pre-construction costs, or kind of like the, um, small beginning, kind of seed money, that's gonna be that $5.2 million, the pre-construction.
So just the 1.9 for ASD Sky is just the design of the building?
That's design, um, that is helping us with community involvement, um, engagement portion of it. Um, that's all the specs, um, that's getting everything to Biltmore so they can do their GMPs, which is the guaranteed maximum price. So that's getting, getting the whole document to them that says, this is everything that's gonna go in the building, and then have, they can go out and get the bids for it.
Mayor, is, um, in the pre-construction costs, I don't see anything about, um, demolition of buildings that are existing?
Yes, and, um, that was not put in, um, for the fact that we believe, um, that hopefully the real estate procurement of $3 million, that'll be incorporated within that.
Also, that probably the demolition would ultimately be in, uh, Biltmore's contract. So the, the folks that would be building, the new building would also be, uh, it'd be responsible for demolishing the buildings that are currently on site.
So that would come into the GMP?
So, yeah.
Yes.
Part of the GMP.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, so the second part of this is kind of the construction, post-construction part of it. So as we, as we go through these, this is how we've come up with the numbers, um, on how, uh, the ultimate price of the project would be. So FF and E and A, so that's, uh, fixtures, furniture, um, equipment and art. So we put a extra $1 million in there. Originally, our FFE and E budget was about $2 million. We've added, we've made that up to $3 million for additional furniture and/or any art that we would have as part of this project. Um, audiovisual and all the cabling and all the IT fund stuff, about $900,000. Then we have a builder's contingency, so that would be on, um, Biltmore's side, that they would have a contingency of about $1 million, that's what we're estimating it to be, um, that would be able to be utilized for anything that comes up during the project that they made a mistake on, they, they, uh, wanna make a change to it. Everything, all of that $1 million would obviously have to be, um, approved by myself as, as a project manager. Um, so we're not gonna just hand them $1 million cash and tell them that, you know, if you got any left, give it back, you know, it's gonna be a, kind of, um, if they, if they need it for something, they have to ask, we have to figure out, make sure that it was something that was kind of outside of the, the normal spec. The same with the city contingency. So, um, we put a $2 million contingency in for the city, um, and that would be for things like, um, you know, maybe we put a wall up, a glass wall, and we get in there and we're like, uh, we don't really like that glass wall anymore, and it's already up, let's, we're gonna change it to a mason wall. There's money involved in making that change. So if we make a change, or we wanna add something to the project late in the game, then we wanted to have a little bit of money, you know, set aside so that we don't have to come and ask for change orders and that kind of things. Because we all know that, think, something's gonna come up as we, as we go through this.
And let me just add in there, those, the, it's, 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 we've always done that on all of our projects, that, that you always have to build two contingencies in, one for the, for the contractor and, and one for the city, 'cause, 'cause as, as Matt said, there, there, there are certainly changes that occur, things that you realize were overlooked during the, during the design process, or opportunities to upgrade things that, that make a lot of sense, but, uh, don't you know they're gonna cost a little extra money?
Yeah, and we all realize that in 2020 or 2021, designing this, something new may come out in 2023 or '24 that is really cool, or something that we really could utilize. So we wanna give ourselves a little bit of wiggle room there. The Phase Three for ASD Skies, um, is $669,500. That is going to be for their construction oversight, making sure that the building is built to the specifications. Um, there's also some requirements that they have to do, um, for us, um, as the, as a designer, there's requirements for them to do, um, per state law. So, um, that's their cost for that. And, um, that is also gonna be a locked-in price, that's part of their contract, um, that we are signing next week, uh, it's about, in front of you guys next week. And then the granddaddy of them all, um, the new City Hall garage construction budget, um, the, this is the estimate, this is the estimated preliminary budget that ASD Sky produced, uh, $38,252,791. So that all grand totals up over $45.8 million for the construction, post-construction, basically everything to, uh, opening. Um, and the on-the-rem, out-the-door price for the building would be just over $45 million.
Balanced.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, insurance and, you know, roadside assistance.
Roadside assistance.
Yeah. So, um, so that's 45 million. So that's the post-construction, or construction and post-construction. So when Mr. Adams talks about, you know, the big, the big, uh, bond, or whatever we're gonna need to do to get money for this building, that's that portion of it. So, um, so that's really all I have for tonight. Um, does anybody else have any other questions I can answer?
Just for, um, curiosity's sake, in the projects where you've had those contingency funds in the past, are they, has it been your experience that they are exhausted by the end of the project, or do you come in under budget?
We have never gone over budget. Um, the, uh, Highland Rec was the one we came the closest on. Uh, the, the other projects, when we did community center and library, uh, we, we turned a, a fair amount of money, and I don't recall those numbers off the top of my head, but...
And to date, um, until we started talking about this project, what was the most expensive building project we've done?
Library.
Just curious.
And one of the things we, we, um, unlike a lot of other organizations, I believe we're very transparent on the cost of these projects, so we include, as you can see on this list, everything. So we've included the furnishings, the, the design costs, the, the actual construction of the building, um, the, the land acquisition. Um, this, this is, as far as we know, the total cost of the project.
One other large number that is included in that $38 million is permitting. Uh, we all know that permitting is gonna be a huge cost for the, the city, um, passed through or not, it's still, I mean, it's still a large portion of the project. Um, that was included in the original budget, um, as part of what they consider to be their contingency, uh, design contingency. So the design contingency, I believe, was $1.4 million of that $38 million. So that was, um, we figured out our permitting is probably going to be $400-some-thousand, um, and then, um, about $1 million in there for concrete charges rise, steel prices become greater, you know, window glazing is, you know, four cents more per, you know, and you're buying 5 billion square feet of it, so it costs a little money, yeah. Well, you know, we're gonna make a big building out of this. It's exciting.
Wow.
It's a lot of glass.
Why the $1 million extra in art?
Well, this is going to be a building for all people of the city of Largo. Um, it's going to be a focal point for our downtown area, so whether it's going to be inside the building, in the courtyard area, between the building and the, um, parking lot, um, we, we believe that there, there should be some component, um, of art involved in this project. Um, not 100% sure what that should be, um, at this time, and it kinda depends on really what the building is going to ultimately turn out and look like, which will lead us down that path. But, um, it's going to be, um, I think that's, that's a major part of the project that we can do for our residents as well, is, is to provide.
And I don't wanna, I, I, I don't want you to feel like we're definitely committing to a million dollars for artwork. It's part of the overall FF and E, and probably of all these numbers, that's the one that's probably the least precise, is the furnishings for the building. Uh, just to give you an idea, if I remember right off the top of my head, uh, next week on your agenda, you're gonna have the furnishings for the, uh, new operations building at Environmental Services, and I believe that is in the neighborhood of $160,000 for that building. So, uh, furnishings are, are, are very expensive for this, for this type of building, but, um, obviously, you're bu, you're buying furniture that's gonna last for, for decades.
And art that we're looking, well, the, the proposed number for art, in, in any type of art that we put in there, it's not gonna be for the mayor's office or your office, it's public art for, for public use, and like you said, so it'll be in, in, in the public space of City Hall.
Yes, sir.
Those type of things would obviously be brought back to the City Commission for, for your review and approval.
Yeah, absolutely, but, yeah, I mean, I...
And, and we're, I mean, we're, and we're going into this as it's kind of a lump sum budget for all of that, so it's not 2 million for this and a million for that. It was originally brought to us that the, the cost of FF and E was gonna be just over $2 million. We didn't really feel like, you know, that was really the number. Um, kind of the gut reaction was that seemed a little low, so bumping it up to $3 million to incorporate everything, um, but it's not gonna be really broken out. Um, we, if we don't spend $1 million on art, then we have a problem, or if we spend, you know, you know, 1.5 million on art and 1.5 million on FF and E, if that's how it turns out, then that's how it turns out.
Yeah, I think it would be safe to say at the end of the day, the furniture is gonna cost more than 2 million, and the art will cost less than 1 million. Now, where that line is, I'm not sure.
And I, I like the, what you said, that it's more outside in the public, 'cause I don't want people to be thinking we're just chambers, the, the chamber's gonna have tons of artwork and things like that, and there's, uh, something I, like...
So some examples of that, I know that we talked about requiring, uh, public art in public buildings, um, and I'm not sure if that is a requirement.
No, it is not a requirement.
I didn't think so. Um, but some examples, uh, when we, when we did Highland, um, the, the, the images on the glass that's facing Highland, that's considered part of the artwork that was put into that building. Um, at the community center, the, the glass mosaic on the outside as you walk in, it's really cool, that was, and it continues onto the inside, as well as the stained glass windows, it was all.
Yes, and if, if I recall correctly, uh, the community center, um, that artwork on the walls cost approximately $100,000.
But, you know, I think you're all saying the same thing, is that you're putting money aside for public art, but... aside for public art. But what that public art looks like will be the topic of much discussion and community input. And, you know, it's, I'm not picking out, I can tell you that right now. I can't pick out paint color. So...
We'd feel better now.
We don't want any camouflage walls. With the antlers sticking out of them.
I think it's just important to say that.
It'll be white.
Yeah.
Or ecru. One or the other. The whole building.
I would have the antlers. Um, the, and on the ASD Sky, the early preliminary designs, it had some examples, like hanging from the, from the overhead in the, in the big public space. And that, that was, and he said, that's just an example. What's that?
Big turn actor.
Right, yeah.
Some Largo Packer pig.
Yeah. I, I, I would anticipate any, any artwork associated with this building because there's not going to be a lot of land around it. Would probably be more an integral part of the building.
No bronze statues of Mayor Brown?
Maybe. That, that got stricken from this list.
Marble only?
Marble maybe.
Yeah.
Miniatures.
You couldn't shut a meeting on that.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
Run away, man. Run away.
Now, now, now Kim's going to explain the magic behind pain for this.
Good evening.
Hello, Kim.
Hello. The, uh, the memo was divided into several different sections, uh, short term, uh, long term, and then really the end was just a, a timeline. Uh, I'd like to reiterate, um, everything's subject to change. Uh, we, we don't know where interest rates will be a year from now. And we're, we don't even know how we're going to borrow the money exactly. We know we need to borrow about $51 million. So, uh, what we're hoping to ask the city commission tonight was just a general consensus on, on our proposals here. And maybe we'll start with the short term first. Uh, as Mr. York mentioned, there's some initial costs, pre-construction costs, um, the C Mar, the land, things like that. And that'll have to be paid for as we go. So the real construction won't start for over a year. And that's really where all the big money will come in, the 40 million to 45 million. But up until that point, we're going to have to finance roughly $5 million, something like that, uh, maybe six for the land. And so a couple, uh, options were put into the memo. We could borrow the money short term, uh, then repay it later. We could borrow long term for the short term costs. Uh, and the proposal I, I wanted to, to get the commission's, um, opinion on is to, since it's a short term borrowing, it's, it's a year, 12 months, something, 14 months, something like that. Uh, the least expensive option would be to finance that in-house. In other words, use city funds and the general fund would essentially be borrowing the money to, to pay for the pre-construction costs. And then when we do the major financing, uh, later on, the long-term financing, uh, that money from the long-term financing could be used to repay the city for the short-term upfront money, uh, that was extended. Uh, that would save short-term borrowing costs roughly $40,000. Uh, it'd be a lot easier, a lot more flexible. Um, and so that, that would be our proposal. And again, we can do it several other different ways.
Not with interest?
When you borrow against, basically borrowing against the general fund is what you're saying?
The general fund is essentially borrowing from all the other funds. And, and so, uh, we did this when we built, believe it or not, this city hall, we did an internal borrowing, which is ironic. Uh, but there was an interest rate because all the other city funds are, you know, owed some kind of rate of return on their, their money. So it'd be market rate. Right now, interest rates are, you know, very low, 1% ish. Um, not expected to go anywhere anytime soon. Uh, there, it would absolutely be a formal written document. Would, would, here's what we're going to plan and do, and here's how much we think it's going to be, and here's how we're going to refund it later. A few weeks ago, I, I brought to the city commission a reimbursement resolution. Uh, that allows the city to start incurring costs now and then refund it with that long-term borrowing later. Not required. We don't have to do it that way. But again, that, it, it probably is the least expensive and the easiest way. Uh, it happens all the time. Uh, most construction projects have a large lead time of pre-construction activities before you actually turn dirt and start putting up, uh, you know, cement and things. So, so this is typical.
What would that do to our flexibility with our sacred fund balance?
Well, right now, the city runs about a hundred million dollar portfolio. So, you know, what we would do is instead of buying, you know, five or six million dollars of investments as investments mature, this would just be essentially an investment for the city. So it wouldn't affect our liquidity, wouldn't affect our flexibility at all.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would not affect the fund balance in the general fund?
Correct. Cause it'd be a loan. If we were talking borrowing $50 million, now we're, now that's a little different story.
So borrowing in the short term, it's not going to affect anything? Okay.
No. And it would be, it'd save us some money. It'd be a lot easier and...
Seems wise.
So, um, part of that, so moving on to the long-term part, um, the long-term financing, again, is for the major construction, the 45 million in, in about 14 months or so. Um, we're probably going to have to use a bond issue, which we have not, the city of Largo hasn't issued bonds in 25 years. We have no bonds outstanding right now. So this would be something unique. Uh, not unique to the world of government finance, but unique to the city of Largo. Again, there's several options out there. Um, bank loans being one of them might not be the best option. Uh, and then loan pools, there's several different governmental loan pools that we might want to access. And then we could issue our bonds ourselves. So it's a fairly, uh, complicated borrowing compared to what we are used to. Uh, when we borrowed money for the library and for, for community center and for Highland, it was a very short-term borrowing. It was a bank loan borrowing. So it was very easy, um, very simple. This will be a little more complex. And there's a lot more options to consider too. So one of the recommendations is to hire a financial advisor. Normally, uh, if bonds are issued, an FA, financial advisor is brought on board. They become like the quarterback of the, of the financing team. Their, their job is to make sure we get the best financing at the best cost with the best interest rate. And those, those people are in the market every day. Um, they know what kind of bonds the market is looking for. Uh, term bonds, serial bonds, capital appreciation bonds. Uh, they know the different underwriters. They, and so they've worked, they work, this is their job is to borrow money. That's their full-time job. So, uh, one of the proposals in the short run would be to bring on a financial advisor. Um, we haven't used one in a while. Uh, the cost could be upward of $50,000. Uh, it's, it's very common, uh, in, in talking with our bond counsel, you know, roughly 95% of bond issues have an FA. Uh, some cities are in the market more than others. And so they're a little more familiar with how it works. Um, dealing with rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, or Fitch, or Moody's. Um, again, lining up underwriters that are interested in the project that essentially the underwriter buys the bonds. There's different ways to, to issue bonds. Without getting into too much, which I might have already done that, but there's competitive and there's negotiated ways. And each one has pros, competitive has a pro and, and a con, and, and negotiated has a pro and a con. Um, we're also considered an infrequent issuer. We could almost be considered a non-existent issuer because it's been 25 years. So that affects a little bit about how the bonds are scrutinized by the market. So anyway, uh, the financial advisor, I think it would be a good investment. Uh, bring a lot of expertise to the team. Uh, again, most, most bond issues have one. The, uh, other, and one of the other options is to, to look at maybe some bank borrowing. You know, that, that may not be the most advantageous because the repayment term would be a little shorter. Um, but again, we want to put everything on the table. We want to look at everything and we want to get the, the best financing, um, that's out there. Comments or questions on the long-term financing? Peace.
On here, you, you did include in here that, that the sale of this property could go towards the...
Yes, it could.
So that would kind of, okay.
That would help pay debt service. Now, it wouldn't, we'd have to wait to build the new city hall to move in. So, I mean, the sale of this property could be a year after, which the bonds would already be issued. So we couldn't use proceeds from the sale of this property to lower how much we're going to borrow. But we could use the proceeds to pay debt service. The other piece, um, I wanted to mention was the CRA. Uh, and the, which is why Chris is here. Uh, the CRA is right smack dab in the middle of downtown. And so, uh, it is absolutely appropriate for the CRA to participate in sharing some of the cost of the project. I had a meeting with Mr. Zimmatt yesterday, phone meeting, to talk about potential, uh, participation. The, the two things that keep coming up are the land purchase and also the parking garage. So those two things would be eligible, uh, to use CRA for a portion of it. And we had put in five, $5 million as just a rough number, roughly 500,000 a year for 10 years. Um, in talking with Mr. Zimmatt and his staff yesterday, the parking garage may be the better candidate for CRA funding. Uh, cost of the parking garage, I believe, is around $9 million, something like that. So 5 million would be a, a little more than half of the parking garage. Um, as I said in the beginning, everything's subject to change. We, we do not have a final, uh, recommendation from Mr. Zimmatt's firm, but that will be coming from them as to, you know, what would be the best, um, participation for the CRA.
And, and also, we haven't touched upon this, but obviously we have different terms here of 20, 25, and 30 years. So, um, you know, the negative, the, the lo, the longer you, you, you stretch out the, the, the borrowing, the negative is the more interest you pay. But the positive is your annual cost is less. So it's very similar to what people do when they buy a house, um, is, is got to determine, you know, what, what your, what your budget is, how much you're willing to, to spend each month on your, on your mortgage payments, and, and then decide whether in this case, a 20, a 25, or 30 makes the most sense to you. So that's another thing we would need to look at carefully when we get closer to that date, based on what interest rates are and all that, what the market is, is for, for, for debt. You know, personally, uh, at this point, I would lean towards the 30 year because it's a lower annual debt service. Uh, Kim's a little more conservative. He likes a shorter term. But we, we, we would look at that when that time came.
Can you, can you do like you do with a house? Do the 30-year and pay extra? I mean, I don't know how government works, but, I mean, is that possible to do that?
Normally, uh, normally no. Uh, it's, it's really based on what the market is, is looking for, in other words. And if you notice, a, a few examples of payments are in the memo. If you notice, the interest rate does go up ever so slightly as you go out with a longer term. It's relatively flat. I mean, today, now again, who knows tomorrow and who knows next year and, you know, but it's, it's a relatively flat yield curve. It's slightly upward sloping, but it's not much difference. Now, a year from now, it could be inverted, which means it could actually be cheaper to borrow longer term. We've seen that happen before. So that's why I, I mentioned, everything's subject to change. Um, you know, the crystal ball, it's, it's just not been working.
I thought you had that crystal.
Yeah. It's, it's still in the shop and they keep promising.
And one thing to keep in mind is this building will be designed to be used for a minimum of 50 years.
That's what I was thinking. You're building something that exists beyond the terminal of borrowing.
Yes, far beyond.
Now, the one thing I'd mentioned in our discussions is at some point you have major maintenance coming on board. It's a little like a car loan. You can borrow for 84 months, but at some point you're, you got to change the timing belt and the, and the, and the tires need, you know, and then all these other stuff. So at 20 or 25 years, there may be, you might need a new HVAC or something. So that's the kind of things we'll have to talk about with the commission. And that's an absolute, uh, factor in deciding how, how long to borrow. But 30, there's nothing wrong with 30 at all. That's, that's, uh, 20, 20 and 30 are the more typical. 25 is kind of in the middle. I just threw that in there just to, to give another option.
Well, do you know what the annual CRA revenue is? Is it a 6, 650, 650-ish? Right around there. So, so it wouldn't take all the CRA money. And theoretically, soon that CRA money's going to increase pretty dramatically too.
And there is a fund balance now.
Right, right over a million or something.
And that, that would be another decision for the city commission.
I think it makes a lot of sense to, for the CRA to participate in, in, in parking as well as the land acquisition.
It's kind of one of the big reasons for putting it downtown, the economic stimulus thing.
Yes. And clearly the, the parking garage will, will have a benefit to, to the downtown, to the businesses and, and, and whatever other reason people are downtown. Because for, you know, a significant portion of, of the day and the week, the parking garage will be mostly empty.
And again, talking with Mr. Zimmatt yesterday, his staff was, they favored more the parking garage than the land. It, it fits definitions a little better. Uh, probably a little less pushback from the county.
Well, given our time in Tallahassee, we're all hypersensitive to this whole CRA topic anyway. To make sure we're on a straight and narrow.
Yes. And, and, um, this is one of those advantages of dealing with the firm like BMO that, that Alan is, is part of, is they have staff that are, um, they're our bond counsel that we've used over the years when we borrow money. So they have experts in municipal finance. They also have experts on, on CRA. CRAs and their laws here in Florida.
So interesting fun fact from the finance side. Yeah, every once in a while, people come up and ask me, well, what's your bond rating in Largo? What, how are you rated? And they're always surprised when I tell them, we don't have a bond rating. We've never needed one. You just don't go out and get one for fun. Cause first of all, it's not much fun. And it can cost you 25 to 50,000 dollars to get a rating. So if we issue bonds, we will actually have a bond rating, which will be very unique. And we should get a, a fairly good one, even though we're not a, we're what they call an infrequent issuer. So we'll have a little more scrutiny, uh, from the rating agencies. But, you know, our, our finances are strong. So we should, we should get a good bond rating.
And doing the bonds would also require having a financial advisor?
Yes. It, it really is a highly recommended. Again, a frequent issuer might even have staff. Some cities are issuing debt every month. So they have staff that are constantly in the market. Kind of like repairing your own car if you're doing it all the time, but you don't want to do it once in a while and...
This is just maybe negative mic. What could be a drawback of, or negative thing of the borrow?
Well, uh, yeah, debt. Sure. Uh, there's good debt and there's bad debt. Uh, debt is leverage. Yeah. And, uh, it, it does remove flexibility. Uh, if you have a, a debt payment that must be made every year or every month, just like in your personal situation, if something happens to your income stream, well, that payment's still got to be made. still got to be made. So it reduces your flexibility, which is why you look at, how much is the payment relative to your income stream? So in the general fund, let's say it's $85 million, and the payment's going to be $3 million a year, roughly. So it's, and then, you know, it does reduce your capacity to borrow more later. One of the biggest things is always to think about when you're borrowing money, is you're committing somebody in the future to repay it. So it's, it is a, it's an awesome decision, because, you know, 50 years from now, that building will still be here, 100 years from now, that building could still be here. The debt's going to only be around for 20 to 30 years, but somebody 25 years from now will be paying that debt. So you're making a decision on someone else's dime.
And I think, from a very practical perspective, nobody could ever pay for a project like this using cash. You just would never have the resources available. The other thing is, is because interest rates are so low now, the inflation rate on construction is greater than the cost to borrow the money. So it would actually, I think you could do an analysis that would show it would be, it would be less costly to borrow the money and build it now, than to save up the money and build it at a future date.
I 100% agree with that. And then, by borrowing, you don't have to major repairs in this building, sort of like when we talked about with Highland. We could have repaired the old Highland, but pouring money into that, it made no sense. So, you know...
On here, it says that it's mostly going to be paid for the general fund, because penny four is mostly spoken for. Is that, is that, let's say that the penny four comes in a lot higher than we expected in the out-years. Can you pay for a portion of it with penny money?
That would be, that would be a commission decision, and it would be eligible infrastructure.
That's what I thought.
And we never want to pledge, you know, future penny that we don't have yet, but there's another...
Out-year pennies, right?
Yeah, penny five, penny six, you know, that, you know, debt service is, again, on eligible infrastructure.
Yeah, so assuming, like, let's say you're getting $10 million a year in penny in 10 years, a commission at that point may say, "We're going to put penny money towards paying off this city hall debt, and not put any general fund money towards it."
And most bond issues have a call feature. Now, you know, let's say we do a 30-year bond, there may be no call for 10. That's just to give the bondholder some certainty of having some return. But then usually, halfway through, there's a call provision where you can call the bonds. Now, if we get a 2% interest rate, I don't know if we'd want to do that, but, you know, that, and again, that depends on what else is going on at the time, what other projects the commission would like to complete.
Have we started any public, reaching out to the public, asking people how they feel about this, or if we had any input? I know this presentation was done for C-DAB, but when do we start reaching out to the citizens to get feedback?
We are actually planning that right now. I think there's a meeting with the communications and engagement staff sometime in the next couple of weeks, to put together a plan that they're working on right now. And particularly because of the environment we're in right now, a lot of that would probably be virtual, a lot of it would be internet-based surveys and what have you, but we will try to do some in-person things as well.
The time of Commissioner Vice Mayor Holt's question is prepared, I mean, we kind of get it to a point, because seat numbers change all the time, but preparing for those citizens who saw 25, 38, and now 51. Is staff prepared for those kind of questions and input?
Yes, yes.
This city hall will actually, with the parking garage, definitely benefit the citizens, plus there's going to be revenue created, correct, because we will have retail?
Yeah, actually, you're reading my mind, as I was just going to mention, that one of the things we did not include, I don't think, in the memo was, or if we did, we didn't put a number on it right now. But yes, there would be revenue from the retail commercial component of the facility that could be used towards the repayment of the debt.
So we can tie that into the conversation to the citizens, in a way, and bringing business back down to downtown, and spurring development with the rest.
And then also solar, correct?
Energy efficiency.
Solar?
Yes, well, we will be evaluating solar on the building. That is something that has been contemplated. Plus, the whole building itself will be considerably more energy efficient than the building we're in now.
Just adding those things, the savings, you know, and all those, they might seem small, but they add up to justify and help people understand.
I mean, we didn't put it in here, but for instance, the revenue from their retail and commercial component could easily be $300,000 a year.
I have no idea what our electric is, but I can imagine that moving there, having more space will probably be a lot less than, like, this old gal's charging, costing.
So moving forward with the short-term proposal, and hiring the financial advisor, and that'll all come back to the commission for approval.
Sounds good.
Do you think that with the bond, bond is the way to go? I mean, is that your recommendation?
Well, more than likely. If we could get a longer term on the bank loan, I'd be all for that. There's actually some legislation pending up there, which I don't know when that, you know, in Congress, to change the bank-qualified borrowing that would make it more advantageous. That could, that could change this whole thing in the next few months. But absent any changes to the laws, it's, Bond Pool is like a bond, it's just we're in a pool with a bunch of other people. $50 million is a pretty good size, so you get a little more economy of scale when you combine borrowings, but $50 million's pretty economical scale. So if we were borrowing $5 million, I'd be saying, "No bonds, let's get in a pool." But with, you know, borrowing $50 million, I mean, it's a pretty good-sized bond issue.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any committee reports to share with us?
Can I?
Just, we already mentioned that legislative roundtable on the 20th, for the Suncoast League, virtual with the senators.
What time is that? What time of the day?
Give me one second, I'll tell you.
I think it's 11:30, isn't it?
Oh, let me hold on.
We can get back to you.
12 o'clock.
12 o'clock.
Okay.
I just wanted to share that the Homeless Leadership Alliance has named a new CEO, Amy Foster, who is also a St. Pete Councilwoman, is the new CEO for Homeless Alliance. Congratulations, Amy. Yeah, she's going to do a great job.
My Tampa Bay Reserve Planning Council meeting yesterday was canceled due to tropical storm, so, because our chairman is from Bradenton, and he expected that the bridge was going to be closed, and he was right. All right. Commissioner Carroll, do you have anything?
Just, tomorrow's Veterans Day. If you run into a veteran, say thank you, and we have the virtual city celebration. And today, the 10th of November, is the 245th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps. So if you know a marine, tell them happy birthday.
Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, just real quick, wanted to say goodbye to Commissioner Holmes, who is not here tonight. But, yeah, Commissioner Holmes and I might not have always agreed on everything. He and I were, but I will say this, Commissioner Holmes absolutely had the best, what he thought was the best vision for Largo. So I, you know, can, I absolutely appreciate the nine, or 10, 11 years that he spent here in the city of Largo as a commissioner, has done fantastic things over the last, during that time, and wish he was here so we could tell him that personally, but, so I have tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Holt?
Just to follow up with Commissioner Robinson, I think that, I know I'll miss Commissioner Holmes a lot. I learned a lot from him, and he definitely did, he loves the city, and a lot of times, did not always feel like it, but he definitely had the city and the citizens in his heart. So I'll miss him a lot. And other than that, it was a great meeting, lots of information tonight, learned a couple of things, but thank you to everybody who came out and gave us presentations. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Holmes and I sparred on some things every now and then, but he certainly put a lot into being a city commissioner, and I appreciate his efforts and his dedication to the city. And I think this is the first meeting he ever missed.
It is. And the mayor's first one.
Yeah, he didn't want to leave without missing one, so, that's all I have. Mr. Schubert? Is Commissioner Finger, I don't see her up there.
Yeah, Justin.
Okay. Do you have anything, Commissioner Finger?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining or being here with us, thank you. Mr. Schubert?
Yeah, I just have one thing. You know, over the weekend, we started monitoring the tropical storm. We were, the conference calls with the county started, you know, emergency management, our EMPC, our Emergency Management Planning Committee, met yesterday. We then met again this morning. The mayor was on that call, the, our call today lasted about three minutes, because the storm had, you know, we were outside the cone, and we felt real comfortable. Checking my email during the meeting, the storm, the cone has now moved, so now we're back in potential tropical storm-force winds, potentially on Thursday. So I guess we'll have another emergency management meeting tomorrow on the phone, or virtually, and we'll continue to monitor it. But certainly, you know, it was moving away from us, then it moved towards us, so there's always the opportunity to move away from us again, so. But again, we'll continue to monitor that. I would say, at this point, it doesn't appear that even if we do get something, it would be, you know, it wouldn't be serious, but certainly something we'll stay on top of.
Thank you. Any action items?
I had none. Is anyone listening?
Sounds right. Meeting's adjourned, thank you. All right.[1493.63]